All right, let's bring this meeting to order. Uh, today is Thursday, August twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, five thirty P M local time. This is the meeting of the City of Herbert Springs Planning Commission, Herbert Springs Michigan, that is for those uh far remotely. And um first thing on the agenda is a roll call.
Bill Molding.
Here.
Barry Lescard.
Here.
Bob Buckner.
Here.
Eeny Benjamin.
Here.
Vanessa Warren.
Here.
Kenny Stewart.
Here.
Tony Johnson is absent.
Chip Everest.
Here.
Mark Vada.
Here.
We have a form.
Tony Johnson will be about a half an hour.
Okay.
All right, next thing on the agenda is our minutes from July seventeen, July thirty first, and August twenty. Anybody have any corrections or additions on those? All right, um. Oh. Karen Offield has asked us to break into the microphones today. Well, let's see you do it, Kenny.
Okay, all right. Two small things, uh July seventeen, first board discussion, this is in the last sentence as I can see. Uh need to have a letter. And then I have a similar huge change for July thirty first, if you're ready. Uh section five A, word A, which starts second sentence, needs to be capital.
Oh, and which section is that second A?
Section five A. That starts with an A.
Oh, glad I was up for that.
Yeah. That's it.
All right, any other corrections or additions? Now would be a time for a motion to, well, three, seven minutes if you'd like to.
I move that we accept all three versions of the minutes.
About all three minutes.
All three minutes.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Second.
Um, we have a motion in a second to accept all three meeting minutes, uh all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Big name. Good, all right, well, let's uh get into it. Oh, first of all, welcome Mayor Tom Grant, thank you so much for joining us tonight, Tom. You're gonna be probably seeing this in the near future, and that's great to have you get a preview here.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, public comment and correspondence, this is the part of the meeting where people can tell us what's on your mind and uh give us suggestions or ideas. And uh but these are things that are not on the agenda for tonight. And on the agenda tonight, really, it's all zoning, uh court square, we're gonna be talking about outdoor display of goods and some other language, really uh scrubbing the zoning map, draft zoning map, reviewing the draft zoning code, and discussing our September schedule. So if you've got some things other than that, um you can tell us. And we have a three-minute limit, and you can introduce yourself. Any hands up on Zoom?
Not this time.
Okay. All right, great. Well, um, this is an exciting meeting because we've come a awful long way and we've just seen our first draft of the ordinance that we've been working on since uh January. And um it's coming together really nicely, and we can still have a few important things to uh review and to confirm. And that's what we're gonna do tonight. Jeff has uh is gonna start us out with some uh things that he noticed that we ought to consider.
Inevitably, there's a few things that we find that uh, you know, weren't in the code that we thought we might want to discuss about adding a language. Uh, some of them we've talked about a little bit, some of them we haven't. So the first one.
Talk right into them microphone, Jeff.
This is better?
Yes.
Right, so the first one is um we proposed and discussed about adding a definition for shed to differentiate between a one-story uh smaller accessory building and larger two-story potential garages and accessory buildings. So what I've got here is a quick little definition. I think the main purpose is to add in a maximum height limit for these and a maximum uh square footage size. I just went on the Home Depot and Lowe's websites, looked at some of the larger-sized sheds that you can kind of preorder. A twelve-by-sixteen shed is two square feet. Ten-by-twenty shed is two hundred, so I just kind of put in as a placeholder for your discussion, two hundred square feet with a maximum height of fifteen. Um, but if you guys would like to amend those numbers to something that you feel is better, um that's fine too.
And can you remind us why we need definition of shed?
So the idea that we came up with uh through discussion was that um accessory buildings, primarily ones that have um accessory dwelling units within them or that are two stories tall, um need to be further from the property line because of privacy concerns. We've had previous discussions and meetings. So we've increased those setbacks to the same side yard setbacks as the principal building. And then we've increased the rear yard setback, where it used to be in some districts as close as five feet, we've increased that to ten feet. Um, to address that issue. Um, however, um, we kind of had some discussion and thought that property owners that have limited space and wanna keep as much of their yard available and don't plan on buildings, larger accessory buildings, and they just want a simple, small eight-by-twelve shed or something like that, to allow that to be a little bit closer to the side or rear setback. And so we have a setback in place for a definition of shed of five. Uh, and this then would be a definition to describe what a shed is, limiting it to one story, limiting it to a a certain overall height, and limiting its square footage in size.
Okay. Anybody have any reaction to that?
Vanessa's got a question.
Mark, is there a certain size, the county, and if it's?
Two hundred square feet. That they don't require.
You don't need a permit.
For it's two hundred square feet.
In our, one thing to add, in our existing fee schedule, we have um accessory buildings that are one hundred and fifty square feet or smaller, do not require a fee. My my proposition is actually whatever we come up with tonight that we would adjust that to correlate with with another square footage previously.
I have two questions, both good. Set aside dimensions, this is in the context of of the zoning itself. Um, if I have a home and a separate A D U of some kind, am I allowed to build a third building, a shed? If I have a large enough space?
I believe in our general provisions, we have language that states that a property owner can have up to two accessory buildings, and that the total square footage of all accessory buildings cannot exceed seventy-five percent of their principal building. That's language that we had in the old code, and we've maintained that in the new code. Um, and and I think keeping accessory building in our definition of shed will help lead to say that this that language would apply to these as well.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, the other question I had was how many per feet, so you've got that in the other zoning language, so as long as that's in there, then I'm satisfied.
So I, like you, Jeff did the same thing, I went on Home Depot and Lowe's and and looked at uh the sheds, and I think uh the two hundred square feet is probably reasonable, it's starting to get almost as large as a one-car garage. Um, one-car garage by definition, I guess, is twelve by twenty or two hundred and forty square feet. So I don't think it should be that large, but two hundred would keep it below that. My only question, and I would defer to Mark on this because he's the architect, is fifteen feet seems kind of tall to me. And yeah, and I'm wondering whether or not that should be more like twelve. The the sheds that I was looking at at Home Depot and and Lowe's, the twelve-foot sheds did not look very imposing, but you know, fifteen feet, that extra three feet makes a difference.
I I pulled that fifteen feet from um, it's in the old code, it might be in the new code. Um, in other areas where we have limited things to one story, that's the height. For, yeah, if we if we want a lower height, I think that's fine too.
But that, I don't have a a voice in this race other than the fact that when I, as I was looking at the diagrams, renderings, when you were getting to fifteen feet, it was starting to look like a a graph, it wasn't looking like a shed, so.
Uh, another thing to point out is, if we do this, we're not saying that somebody can't have a shed that's larger than these numbers. We're just saying that if they were to have a shed that was larger than these numbers, it would need to need to be the regular accessory building setbacks.
Right, understanding.
Yeah, just for anybody else that's listening as well.
So Bob, when you went shopping and you found a twenty-by-ten building.
Yeah.
What was that height, was it twelve feet?
That. Uh, yes, that was that was twelve feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's how they tend to build them, is that proportion?
That's correct.
All right, it sounds like uh is everybody okay with two hundred square feet for a shed?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
That one's included in the total accessory A D U.
And is everybody okay with a twelve-foot maximum height? I guess.
Yeah.
All right, Jeff? Two hundred square feet and twelve feet max.
Great. Um, the next one is public charging stations, we have a couple of them right now down at the marina. Um, we've had some potential interest in other people maybe adding some in future projects. Uh, we also have some language in our master plan encouraging green and other various things of this nature. So my thought was, we ha- already have in our existing proposed draft here, um, some alternate methods that people can provide parking or provide things that would count for parking. One example that we have in the code already is if somebody wants to have some of their parking be bicycle park, that that can count as parking space. So the idea here is, do we want to consider the idea of allowing some type of extra benefit if they choose to make some of their parking spaces be um for um like an E V charging station? And a way that we could incentivize that is if they provide a parking spot with an E V charging station, maybe that counts as two spots instead of one. This is an idea to throw out to see if you guys like that, and if it might work within the park regulations that we that we are proposing.
Would this be for, would this be for um just general parking requirements? Like if you have, you know, an apartment or something like that that requires two because of the size, and you're just putting one E V then you just have to have a one parking spot?
Yeah, I I think the proper place for this would be in our um in our parking requirements for properties. So if you had, like, let's say, a retail store or something where you are having to provide parking for um, you know, visitors of your business, and so, which is based on square footage or whatnot.
Right.
This would be part of that, so I think this would not necessarily be a rule that would be applied to, let's say, a a private E V charging station at someone's home for their use. This would be something that would uh an E V charging station that would be in a public parking lot for public use.
Yeah, but I guess my only comment on that would be, my concern would be that, you know, we have those requirements for certain reasons for a number of people and to take pressure off all public parking, and this would maybe work against that. So I do have a concern about that type of being incentivized.
It was, again, just a thought for you guys.
That's my comment.
I feel the same way, um, I have a concern about it being, well, taking up the parking spaces that we need, um, sorry, I'm trying to walk into this thing, as well as just um, it it feels political to me um to be promoting E Vs charging stations, I think we need to, we have something to code about it. If you wanna build one, please, how you have to do it for safety reasons, I like that. Promoting it, I don't think it's our duty to do that, thanks.
Any other thoughts around the table? Um, so it sounds like we're coming down against um incentivizing public electric charging. People can figure that out, figure it out on their own.
Great. The last one's probably a little bit more of an in-depth discussion, um, we can to provide some background, in the two thousand and five code that we're currently working under, we have language regarding outdoor displays and how they can be done, limiting them both in the location on the property, um, and how large they can be. Um, realistically, when this was implemented and put in place, I think primarily the properties that we were looking at and how to work this were properties that were um on Main Street with outdoor displays that were slightly extending into the 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 street and the public sidewalk. And so a lot of the.
Scroll down.
Oh, thank you. I'm gonna go right to this language here. Um, so most of this language is kind of providing regulation for those purposes. Um, when we originally drafted the two thousand and twenty-four code, we had left that language out. And then we had a a a quick resolution at city council after it was adopted to add that language back in. Um, so in our review here, we had kind of neglected to go back and take a look at this. Also, we've had a couple of um discussions on this topic at the D D A meetings. Um, and they have some ideas of some things that they would like to modify. The, I think one of the key things that they um wanted to try and address was the the original existing language doesn't really work very well if you have a business that is not right up at the sidewalk in the public street, if it sits back farther. Uh, examples would be properties like where Glassworks um or uh the Tile Works Place, they sit back quite far from the from the sidewalk. And the current limitation says that your outdoor display needs to be within three feet of the face of your building. So that really puts it back from where the public is actively walking down the sidewalk. So the first bit that we have here in the revised language is providing some way or for those businesses to have outdoor displays that are closer to the sidewalk. Um, you know, that the passersby can can stop by and and browse, cruise. Um, the, we do show a slight indicate or increase in the total square footage of of what their outdoor display could be, but that extra square footage would all have to be on their property, not extending into the the sidewalk. The the portion that would be able to continue into the sidewalk would remain the same as what it is under the existing code we have today. Um, there's mo- most of the language in here, it's the same language from the original uh language, just remodified. I saw a couple of places where we repeated some lines, I just cleaned it up and organized it a little better. Um.
Yeah, D D A has waited on this already?
We've had some discussions, they haven't seen this closed language, so I am going to be taking it to their September meeting. Um, so if they have any, um, I'd I'd like to get feedback from you guys tonight about the thoughts that you have to incorporate that and take that back to the D D A for discussion there. I believe they meet on the eleventh, um, so we'll be able to have some discussion, and then I'll be able to come back with some final thoughts based on this and that um for our public hearing. One other thing that I would like to talk about here is um in the original language, we have a section that states that this shall not apply to newspaper racks. Uh, basically, it kind of takes a stance that newspaper racks aren't really forbidden on the sidewalk. Um, we've had some discussions uh with staff and with the city attorney, um, there's some court cases and whatnot out there, uh basically stating that we have to, we can't really be that hard-nosed about it, we have to have some other ideas. Um, we are going to have, it sounds like, some language in the city code about one location where um where, you know, any business that wants to do some type of newspaper rack or whatnot uh could be had. Uh, they're they're currently, I think, discussing where that location could be placed. Um, but we also have some businesses that are in town that are already really doing this, and we really didn't make the correlation that what they're doing is a newspaper rack. Um, and really, that kind of revolves around some of the realtors' offices downtown that might have a small newspaper racked out. And it's not necessarily like a newspaper, like a magazine that they've put together with their listings on it, um, and that would fall under this, so. Um, my goal was to try and incorporate a way to bring those into outdoors plays to allow them to happen. Um, so in the new language, basically what we're doing is uh proposing to modify to state that newspaper racks would fall under this and would be subject to these rules and regulations as far as placement where they could be. Um, but then also still keeping that same language that any other rules that um city council and the city code would put in place would also be um enforceable as well.
Landing commission, any thoughts on this stuff?
Just a question, I think I know the answer to this, hypothetical. Um, Harbor Boys, for example, um, just north of the coffee shop. They have fair amount of real estate between them and the sidewalk, and they fill that up with additional square footage of display space, or is is there a limit to that, similar to the other restricted areas?
So, under the existing language that we have in place in the two thousand and five code, um, they can't really do much of anything, they can have, they can have an outdoor display that extends three feet out from the face of their building. So it would have to be set well back from the sidewalk and just up against the wall. Um, and to give you an example, um, you know, three feet is really not that much, it's a little bit more than a bench. Um, most of the businesses in town that are doing that, that's what they're doing. Um, this would not allow them to fill that up. It would provide them with a little bit more room, uh because obviously they have some of their own property, as opposed to asking to extend it out into the public sidewalk. Um, and we do give them a little bit of credit for a little, I mean, some of their own space. Um, but to give you an example, you know, the existing language we have is ten square feet. That's about two feet by five feet, it's really not that big, um, it's about the size of a bench or a clothing rack or something like that. Um, and we're basically just proposing another ten feet that they could do on their own property. So similarly, not not very large. Um, and again, that basically whatever their outdoor display would be, maybe the outline on the ground of where that would be and how, what size it could be.
Thanks. Is the purpose of the code to, uh, for safety reasons, pedestrians or some workers, we don't all look like a prostitute?
I think first and foremost, um, you know, we have to kind of stay away from aspects. I I know that we, you know, we would like to be able to control that as much as we can, but our purpose really has to be for the health, safety, and welfare, so one of the key languages we have here is protecting pedestrians and their ability to use the sidewalk, so we have some language in here. Um, we have it in some other places for outdoor seating and dining as well, where we kind of discuss and maintain that six-foot clear walking path to make sure that pedestrians always have the primary use of the sidewalk in their ability, so, and we've repeated that language here to make sure that that's protected. Uh, but that does touch on um, another thing that we've had some discussion on, um, between myself and the city attorney. Um, what can we control as far as the the quality of the display? And we have to be careful because it's difficult, we can't really get into, I think, trying to control the content. Um, but what we can control is materials used. So if there are certain types of aspects of an outdoor display that we don't like and that we can easily define in um, in the materials that they're using for that, that is something that we could control. Um, an example of an outdoor display that we received some complaints about and it was not really looked very fondly on in past years, somebody had as part of their outdoor display was a garbage can, it wasn't used for garbage. Um, it is clean, but it had lintel. So we could create a small list of items that's that says an outdoor display shall not include or contain garbage cans, um, whatever else we may feel is appropriate to include on that list, as long as we can define it in those terms. If we feel that clothing racks are not appropriate, and we don't want us to see a rack of clothes, but a mannequin displaying clothes is is okay, we can, we can pick and choose some things like that, as long as we're consistent in that we're describing those materials, I guess, as opposed to saying, we don't like the look of pink shirts or or, you know, something like that.
Is there anything regarding, it has to be your business product? If I wanted to have a trunk show and wanted to rent out there, is there, is that an issue at all?
We we do have language in here that says that your outdoor display has to be in front of your building, you couldn't have an outdoor display, like, for instance, if you're at one building and I'm at the next, I couldn't give you permission to have your outdoor display come over and encompass in front of my store.
Okay.
Right, um, we have other language in the city code that talks about trunk shows and that type of thing, um. We have, we have, that requires a specific license for somebody to do something like that, and we do have policies on how that would be managed.
Eeny, do you have any other, you probably s- see it? Any other concerns?
I think that Jeff covered, I think that why it existed and got muddy was a store a number of years ago that took advantage of the sidewalk, so I don't know that there's been an issue since then, I don't know if I'm right or wrong.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
It's been, and then uh Mayor Graham, you're down there more than anybody else, have you, do you, is there anything you could think of regarding this?
No, I think that's all by interview. Except there's the north side of Main Street between Spring and Spring and State, I think, like the paper says, you know, there, the property line is about like four feet from all of the building. Sidewalk wire and stuff. I assume those people all could.
All right. Sounds like we're good to go, if Jeff says it's good, and then he'll check in with uh everybody else and bring us back any product.
This has certainly been a topic that has garnered more attention and discussion over the last few years, so my recommendation would be whatever we put in place, maybe we, um, after next summer, we revisit it just to see how it's gone, and if we wanna make any updates, changes to it, we can certainly do it at that time.
Great. Okay. Jeff, do you have anything up right now, or should we go to the map?
Maybe we discuss something else, but I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, I've got a couple other things rattling around, but why don't we go to the map? And uh can we have any way to show the map on the government map? You came up after the package. Uh? Okay. Okay, uh, landing commission. What we have here is the first view of the map that uh comes from the decisions that we made all the way since January. And um um second rateer, a team put this together for us and have worked on it uh to make this exact width and space as it possibly could be. And um Jeff and John, you wanna take us through this and tell us about some of the decisions and recommendations that you had to make uh in sharpening this thing up? Landing commission, we're gonna either confirm these or suggest change.
Yeah. I'll I'll start it off, and if any else have any thoughts, they can jump in. So I think the the key things are to look at where we need changes. Um, some of these changes were changes that we had discussed in in Miami districts, so we can see that the R one, the R one C were combined together. Um uh, another change that we had were for minor ones, um, like, we we had discussed uh quite extensively how to handle community property, um, we had some community property or property that was owned by municipality or or other um agents of in that nature, but was, some of it was left in the community district and other properties were in the zoning district, it were. So we decided to kind of make that a little bit more uniform. Um, so the 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 green area that we can see is community property, and basically we've taken any of the parks, any of the property that is and put it in district. Um and we can see some of those changes were, um, for instance, some of our waterfront parks. Um, I think one thing that we did know, that it doesn't look like it's been updated on here that we were gonna go back, that was uh Old City Hall. I think that one is, it's one that does seem to be corrected on here, it's not. Uh, another change that we did was, um, we previously had the transitional residential district, which was really kind of scattered throughout the whole city. Um, we had some property, let me zoom in a little bit more here. Maybe shoot the map a little bit better. Um, the big discussion on. Um, the big discussion on DR was properties along Bay Street. And we have moved those into an R one zoning district. Um, as we had discussed. Uh, also, we had some TR properties that were over at the west end. Of um the central business district adjacent to Zorn Park. There's two properties there. Um, one of them currently is a duplex. The other one, I believe, is a single family residential home. And we moved that into the R two district. We had some other transitional residential property that was right up near the corner of Lake and State. Uh, and that's owned by, that was a residential home that was owned by uh. The Harbor Car Care and he was under that same business and so he um chose to join that next to. The V two district.
I got one. So uh, the big green, big light green plot is the. RA district we're calling now. Presidential agriculture that we kept. And um hopefully that's a crowd pleaser. The uh, there were some properties on West Blueup Street Road. That were split among different zoning districts. And we cleaned that up and made those all completely RA now.
We tried as much as possible to take any property that was in more of a zone district and have it be. Um, controlled by one specific zone district, and that is the best example. One other spot that did pop up. And in this case, it was unavoidable. Um. What we do still have a little bit of that is the backside of the TR properties on Bay Street. Um, are in CBD and there are some of those properties that extend all the way from Bay to Maine. And so those are, I believe, the only properties that still are split between two districts.
So we kept Christians, business and agriculture?
There were some lots that were zoned um AR along Arbor. Those have been changed as well. Yes. In looking at those properties, many of them were the same size as the R one C and R one B properties that were in the area. Um, then, yeah, the Arbor north of Lake. And the west side of Ottawa Street. Or AR.
Right.
Um, Ottawa Street, I think, is a great example for the needed to some. Form here. Um, Ottawa Street had like five districts. So um, yeah, we basically just kind of combined all those into one. Um. The none of the, none of the properties seemed to be doing. Any type of commercial agricultural use, so it didn't seem that we needed to keep that district there. Yeah.
Uh, Karen. You were gonna remind us to try to care for the little house on. Bay Street. Down by the. And we did remember to put the, those two lots into a rest. R one B.
Much appreciated.
Thanks.
Thank you.
For the reminder.
So, um, please in the book. Right, Jeff, right below like. One nineteen. We used to have like a little green that was community. It's between Anne and State. And now you've put it into um R one B. Is there something there? Or is that just a bluff?
So that's, that's a portion of the Southern Crandall's addition to City Harbor Springs. That's kind of a unique, interesting spot. Um, it was green because for a number of years, City of Harbor Springs. Um, and, and members of the public were under the impression that City Harbor Springs owned that property. And we were maintaining the trimming rights uh to that. Um, through research, we found out that Southern Crandall's addition owns that property and they're in charge of how they'd like to maintain that. So. So we just put it in the district right there.
John, just out of curiosity, does your program, can it give the, the total percentage of the acreage? Uh, for each of these different districts? Or do you have that?
We don't have it. We can get that. Karen.
So, the area where the trailer park is.
The mobile home park?
Home park. Um, and then the, the golden strip there, the gold strip, I think, is Windermere. And because it's um. Um, four units per building, would that be different than a two family?
So then, yes, um, the strip that Windermere Pines is on, that is in an R two district for duplexes. Um, back in the mid to late eighties, there was a planned development. Uh, basically, they looked at that property and kind of said, we could put this many duplexes on it. But instead of doing duplexes, we're gonna do the same number of units, but do them as duplexes and stuff. So it's still uh R two zoning is what, what goes there as opposed to moving it up to RM. Um, we could certainly have a discussion uh about making that change if, if you feel it is appropriate, but um. But we didn't see a need to change the zoning at that time, just based on the fact that it was planned and all them. We certainly feel like if we'd like to. Provide them with different opportunities.
So I, um, okay, yeah, thank you very much. So I think that um. The thing that says Windermere Pine is in the wrong place.
Unless there's something that says Windermere Pine. Always Harrow face.
Yeah.
We got that one? Any other impressions, thoughts?
I had one. One last, Jeff, on the R one B, R one C. Um, before I stated that uh I was for combining districts as long as the dimensions and the uses apply. And um. You know, we talked about changing the dimensions on being R one C. To be the same um in order to produce a number of non-conforming properties. You know, with the small number of grants from West of the zoning board of appeals, I don't think we have a nine. And it was an issue of expense. Get the variance, maybe we discuss. Changing the review process, but don't worry about it. That's an idea. And secondly, um, on the density thing, you know, we keep talking about how it's only gonna, if, if. In kind of the most extreme case, it would only provide for a few more houses. You know, I, but I've been told by this group is why not change it then? And my view is why change it then? Uh, if it's only gonna matter a little bit. So uh, that's on the uh dimensions, but on the uses side is where I have the bigger problem. And that, that relates to today, the R one C has the ability to take in. Today it's called boarding, boarding rooms, boarding houses. And I don't think we've discussed boarding houses enough to really kind of talk about that. I've been pretty consistent in the past about not wanting to remove existing property rights. And the folks in R one C have that today, so I'm not suggesting we take that away. But I am suggesting we take a hard look about its ability to be zoned in R one A and R one B. Um, boarding houses to me um are, if you talk about that last meeting about how it's more about. Um, seasonal and employee housing. And um. You know, with the. It, for me to, the idea of taking a house that's currently in a residential district, a single family house. And converting it to a boarding house. It's akin to um adding more parking issues. And really more akin to short term rental things. There could be a lot of people during the season and then nobody. And that just doesn't feel right to me. So um. Fact is, we, you know, we've eased the restrictions on ADUs, which I'm for. Um, so we have more capacity to put uh folks in longer rentals. And um, you know, in R one A now and R one B, I'm glad about that, but I do have a problem with. Uh, the designation of special use for boarding houses.
Jeff, do you mean co-living houses? I thought we got rid of the boarding. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Existing code is boarding houses and I'm talking about co-living.
Right now, it's a special in RA and it's a special in AB and E of R, which would include C.
That's correct. Today is only in C, not in A or B.
Today. But what we're proposing is doing it as.
And that's, that's the issue. I don't, I need to understand that situation better.
Great.
So maybe feel better about boarding houses or co-living spaces or whether or not it's gonna become. Quill to short term rental with the people and who are coming and going.
So uh, I'm not sure I can make anybody feel better. I just uh observed that if it's special land use, it's a pretty high bar, you know, based on what we. Um. Well, uh, the last accessory dwelling unit we just heard and um. Neighbors in the neighborhood are gonna get to have a very robust say about. Any application. In any neighborhood.
But my understanding of special use is that we can't subjectively deny.
Right, they have to meet our seven standards.
Right, and um. I, 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 I don't think those standards are robust enough for this issue.
Well, um, at our last meeting, we talked about one of the things we can do in addition to these set of standards. Is we can put in specific regulations for that special. The best example that I can think of or um some type of co-living. Excuse me, is to come up with some type of occupants. Uh, I think one of the things we discussed at the previous meeting. Um, cause the idea or the concern was the size of building, uh, the density that would create. Another property. Um, and we originally looked into maybe identifying that there would be a minimum size of property. That uh, that some type of co-living could be done on, uh, discussed in last meeting. Um, another thought that John and I had when we were discussing this further and coming up with what some of those specific regulations could be. Is to identify occupancy issues limits on that, um, such as number of people per bedroom. Uh, so the idea was an existing home, if somebody wanted to apply to convert. They would be limited based on the number of bedrooms through there. Um, further um detailing the size of the structure that can be placed on the property, which we already have a lot, a lot of rules. Regulations are hearing that as far as, you know, block coverage and things like that. Uh, can be placed to further create other rules that you can implement upon them. Uh, anytime that you have some type of special land use, you're admitting or, or acknowledging. That it has a potential higher intensity of use with the potential for negative impact on the green progress. Sometimes we found that those negative impacts become more um. Recognized or, or, or less of a concern to neighbors. And a good example of that is guest quarters. Over the years, people have been more and more excited to see them come into town and we've. Lessened the restrictions on implementing guest quarters to the point where I believe now we've. Moved it away from special land use permitting. Um. You know, with something like this that has more contention within the neighborhood, the, the standards are there to say and to address those. Mitigating concerns and negative impact to the neighbors, you know, and they're, they're more broad and they're still. But you can have some very specific regulations to say. Here's something we want to make sure doesn't have. Right, like, like parking, we don't want to see parking up the street. So we can clearly say all parking must be on the property, must have a certain. The things of that nature. So some of those I think can be addressed. If the idea is bigger than that and you just see a disruption, how it shapes the community. Then you, then that's where you look at whether or not you want to permit that use in that neighborhood. But I think the thing to keep in mind is, I'm not aware of any and other people that. Have been around for a while may, may know better than I. I'm not aware of any existing co-living or rooming or boarding houses that are in R one C. Or R one B. My knowledge is that the current ones that exist are all in R two or R one A.
Um, they're currently permitted in R one C.
I'm not talking about where they're permitted, I'm talking about where they currently exist. Where the, where the actual use of how we're seeing them used in town.
So many folks in the current R one B, they border R one C. And so that designation really doesn't help the folks on Summit and Pine, where it's just across the street from them. Anyways, so we want to have a discussion about. Co-living and what that looks like and how that impacts a neighborhood. I'm all for it, but just by keeping someone in R one B. Can easily look across the street and see it, and it's still gonna be an impact. And now being in that R one B doesn't help.
I realize that and being, so one suggestion would be not allow anywhere. But I'm, but I'm against taking away people's existing property rights in R one C. That's, that's my issue with that.
But my issue is, is separating these two because of that. It doesn't help people in. R one B. It doesn't, I, I can still look at it across the street.
Um, I, I'm in agreement. I, I do with, with Vanessa. I do remember the last, in my memory, the last time we had. Back then, a boarding house uh. Review is up on State Street and the neighbors came out very strongly against that. And we decided, so those protections worked really well. And so I'd be very, I'm fine with combining these together and if all boarding houses. Were a special use permit, I think we would be protected. The community would protect themselves. I don't think you're taking anything away, cause even if it's allowed right now, I agree with Vanessa's point. It's gonna be right across the street or in somebody's backyard.
And there's a lot of folks that are on that border.
Right, I, I agree it's arbitrary. That's not the issue. It's just that they currently have it. I mean. Um. I, I, you know, I don't like taking away people's existing property rights. But I would be fine with it not having them at all in town.
And Jeff, the way it goes through as far as geography can be within a certain feat from another existing. Then also, we, I thought we did put in place that no more than two people per bedroom.
Based on the discussion that we had at the last meeting. There is a section that's in the proposed ordinance, seven, like two point five co-living unit. That references on page seventy one, which references the discussion that Jeff, Jeff and I had. Relative to how to manage these, we had the. Maximum occupancy at six, limiting to one person per bedroom. And there has to be one parking space per person. And by doing that, it really. Increases the size of a lot. So it. The, these requirements would require a large lot to begin with. And then. I think to Mark's point and Vanessa's point, under the special use approval. There's a lot of standards that have to be met that talk about. Uh, the uh. Impact to adjacent properties relative to public nuisance. Uh, diminishing the value of the property. Uh, having the appropriate amount of infrastructure to serve. So it's like what Mark was getting at. There's the standards under the special approval. Provide the planning commission and the community with a lot of added protections as part of the process. So between what would be required and then they also have to meet the special provisions. In the special use approval, it really does provide a lot of protections relative to if somebody wanted to do a co-living.
Taking a look at those provisions in seven to five co-living unit. Uh, I, they, they look fairly robust. As you said, a limit of six, one per bedroom, talks about parking. Uh, and there is a requirement uh of. Uh, and there is a requirement of twelve hundred feet between make no straight line between facilities. So that seems to be fairly robust.
I also think there's a, a fairness issue here as well. I mean, there are lots dimensionally that are defined as classic, uh, R one C lots, you know, a hundred by sixty-five feet that are in R one D neighborhoods. They don't have the right under the current ordinance to have, uh, co-living. Whereas if they were just across the street, they would. I, I just don't see that that's a particularly fair thing. So I think if there's, I think the, uh, the special, uh, approval is going to protect us against this.
Yeah, I'm gonna, here's, here's two standards I just seen. Proposed special land use shall not create a nuisance for be hazardous to public health, safety and welfare. And proposed special land use shall not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in their surrounding area, will not be detrimental to existing future and or other permitted special areas. So you, I can only imagine what the neighbors would say on those two points. I mean, you could make a pretty robust case, uh, if you were against such things.
Yeah, I hear that, but I mean, they're subjective and we're, we're open to, you know, pushback big time, um, because of that.
All right, let's take, uh, Mark.
Uh, um, I mean, I'm a little bit, uh, uh, be told to apply this distinction between existing property rights, overall property rights. Uh, I thought that in your objectives for these sessions, that offering, uh, more opportunities to property owners was one of the, the big objectives. And that doesn't say just opportunities that are currently existing. It means opportunities. I mean, it's the statement is that it's opportunities in general. And, and so I'm, I'm really sort of taken aback by your stance that, that, well, it might be okay to, we don't want to take away current rights of owners. But I think, you know, we need to be looking at overall rights. And I thought that's what was trying to be done.
Um, I was just thinking that, uh, I don't know if River Springs really wants to be known as a town that only allows one person per bedroom. And it doesn't make any, any sense. I mean, is, is that really a sensible? Does that, does that really happen? That you're only allowed to have one person sleep in a bedroom?
I, I think it was important to remember, uh, and, and anybody else might have missed, this is not something that would be implemented on all private residences. Nobody's saying that, you know, two people can't share a room. What we're saying is, is if you're, if you're choosing to have a residential house in a residential neighborhood and the intent of that is that you're going to have multiple non, multiple people living that aren't acting as a family unit. And the best example of that is workforce housing, which we already have in town, right? Um, that's really, I think, what we're talking about at the end of the day. In those situations, we're trying to create rules and limitations that if we feel it's appropriate to approve could be implemented to control how that property could be used for that means. And identifying characteristics and ideas of that use that would be negative to the neighbors that we would like to make sure don't happen, right? If we, you know, let's say that we didn't have rules and somebody started doing a workforce housing in a ten-bedroom home, a house that didn't have a driveway and had no parking. Now we have ten cars potentially on the, on the street obstructing vehicular and pedestrian traffic. That would negatively impact the neighbors. And so that's something that clearly that I think we can say. If we were to allow it, we need some regulations. We, we need to have one parking space per resident. Or to limit the number of residents in that home. If it's a three-bedroom house, do you want to see fifteen people living in it? I, I think also allowing it to have some flexibility. If it's a fifteen-bedroom house, do you want to say only three people can live there? So some type of, you know, regulation, but also how does it fit within the neighborhood and how, if we were to allow it, what would be the way that we would do it? But also, is it something that we should allow?
Uh, just two points. Uh, one is that. Two points. One is that the, uh, the building code, as once you have a, a boarding house use, you know, they take there's an occupancy that it has to be listed and there's certain places that have this hard fire protection and things like that that make it quite onerous. Once you have, you try to have that intense threat of venture use. Once you get away from a single-family use, um, the code requirements go way up really fast. And I suggest it'd be very hard to actually, you know, build a code and not spend a whole lot of money on it. And my second comment is, Chip, I understand your position on taking away, uh, property rights. I feel the same way. Um, but in this case, I'm looking at just unifying these districts sort of outweigh the, the fact that, you know, maybe we're taking something away that could never really happen anywhere. So, but I understand the position I, I respect it.
Just a question, a clarification. Today, R one C as by right, they'll be to do this. Are they something? Am I?
It's special use.
In special use, you know, okay. So whenever it would occur in today's environment, it would be subject to these rules, right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, thanks. I wasn't sure.
All right, uh, Rick.
Uh, Rick, our thanks to State Street. Um, two points. One, dealing with the map. I, I may be reading this wrong, but I don't think I'm seeing that development that's going on on East Lake, between Lake and Pine. Um, that is not showing up on the map that I can see. Is, is that going to be on here eventually?
What development is going on between Lake and Pine?
Where they split those lots.
There's a building back there and it's not on here.
Well, I mean, these, these parcel lines that are on these maps, they're not, you know, they're, they're on there to provide some example of what lots are there, but they're not kept up to date. Similarly, like how, um, the I S maps online are. Um, so it, I mean, the, the zoning that would apply to them. Um, we just don't have that, that layer in the map updated that currently.
Okay, okay. Uh, second point, the property on State Street that Mark referenced that brought up a lot of neighborhood anger, uh, to be employee housing. Um, have they come before this board to be employee housing again? Because my understanding is they're kicking out all the residents and it's going to be employee owned.
Well, let's, remember, um, if I own a business downtown and I buy a house, I put one employee in it. That's not necessarily employee housing. That's housing that, you know, that one person is using for their needs. That property on State Street, it, it's an existing non-conformity that there are three dwelling units on that property. So if a property owner wanted to put an employee, one in each unit, or let's say that, that employee and that employee's family in each unit. Now it's each of those units is being used for single-family purposes. They would need employee, or they would need special approval if they wanted to put more than one employee in each unit. And at this point in time, I've had many conversations with the property manager that owns that property. Um, and I don't, I don't know the details of whether he's kicking people out. I'm getting different sorts of people and I don't want to.
Yeah, I, I've heard that he's canceled all the leases.
I, I've heard that too, but I, I mean, I haven't seen anything. I, I don't know. I don't want to speak to that because I, I don't know the whole situation, but he is the property owner. If, if I were to buy your house, Rick, and kick you out so that I could live there, is that, is that bad? Or, or if I were to buy a property in town to use it as a rental to rent to a family, that's, that's me owning that property and using it for my purpose. And it, it, sometimes it is unfortunate when someone lives somewhere that they don't own and you're property owners, not continue to rent to them. Um, and, but I don't know what he's going to do. I have had conversations with him. And if he wants to pursue, he knows what, if he wants to use it for employee housing, more than one employee in each unit, then he has to come for a special land use approval, right? He's aware of that.
Okay, we better get back to this decision at hand here. And the decision at hand is, uh, Chip's called the question, should we continue to have, uh, co-living units? Is that what we call them? Uh, on, right, available by special land use in the district that we showed them on in the chart. How do people feel about that?
I can clarify that. If, if we are leaning towards domination rather than need, uh, take away, I, I would propose something in payment of life, which is allow this to happen. In what we're proposing to be the new R one B, provided our provision uh, criteria is sufficient. I think we can, it sounds like we're quite close. We just need to look at that perhaps on the time. But Chip, what you're bringing on the table is should we have them or not? And I'm proposing to take a discussion that we should within the, called the orange of this map that we're looking at with all the necessary guidelines provisioned for park. So it would be not by right. It would be special use in order to kick in those.
Okay. Mark, what are you thinking?
I'm in alignment with the idea that if they are allowed that, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm in alignment that they are allowed that they all be special use permanent. I think there's very robust protection. And maybe one or two properties, uh, and one or two owners who may have the wherewithal to actually make this happen. When you start adding the parking, all the other requirements and compliant neighbors, it's only one or two that probably possibly falls off my.
Gene, where do you come down?
I've never liked combining the two, but you.
Let's just, let's leave it right to co-living.
Yes, I think that what we have proposed makes sense and that we have enough on paper to make it, okay.
Okay, let's come back to the lot, or the, just, Tim.
Well, I appreciate the comments on the protections we can put around ourselves. I, I do. Uh, it just, you know, anytime you bring in subjectivity, you open yourself to letting things happen or whatever. So I'm not going to follow this word with this, but I just wanted to have the discussion. I don't think we had it last time enough in my opinion. My proposal would protect today's rights of the R one C, so it satisfies your concern.
I'm in support of, uh, the proposal for co-living units in, across the proposed, uh, R one B district. Uh, I think there are sufficient, uh, criteria to, to measure that. Uh, the, uh, special land use provides extra protection. And from what we heard tonight, there's already uh, co-living in existing R one B district. Is that what I heard?
R two and R one A.
R two and R one A.
That's, that's the ones that I'm aware of.
Okay, sorry, I stand corrected.
Okay.
I still, I still support.
All right.
Yes, I'm, uh, in favor of collapsing the districts and also of allowing co-living, uh, specialty.
Okay, good. Welcome back to the districts.
To support co-living, special lands.
Yeah, I support it as well as long as it's special.
Okay, so, yeah, okay. Then we confirm that we're going to keep special aid use for co-living in RA, R one A, B, and here, R two. Okay, now let's get on to.
No, I didn't get it. I think it's three remain, one twenty-five each time. I guess my issue was that there needs to be single-family designation on some of these zone areas. We've gone to a more generic name. And what my thought is with all this, you know, proposal being all that, it was really people against increased density. In my mind is that any area that was single-family designation in the past should continue being in it, being no duplexes, no pride, no flaws, no, uh, ability to have a boarding house. You can give grandpa ring so that you don't take away other people's rights. But far going to structural land use, it depends who's on the planning committee. It's, you know, in, in the state, there's other barriers, fear is me, but it's, it just can't happen when a single family doesn't inherit. And that makes it real easy. If you, unfortunately, the people that currently have them, it gives them a preferential advantage to having that kind of property, but that is what it is. You can't go back and pass, but I would like to keep a single-family area, single-family and keep it that period.
So when you're ADU, no one's going to be living there.
That's not, that's, that's a different thing.
Really, I change the point. Uh, by the way, I think we have good news for you. The duplexes are not going to be permitted. Were you up on that?
No, but, um, can't hear of it.
Okay. And anyway, the planning commission just decided we're going to keep co-living, uh, special land use in those areas. Uh, okay. Now let's talk about combining the two districts. Today's R one B and today's R one C. And what you see on the map in the sandy color, it doesn't look like that on the screen, but sandy color is what it looks like when those two districts are combined. And so what do people, what do people see there? What do you take away? What do you make of finals?
My takeaway on a building is I would defy anyone to draw a line anywhere on this map that would distinguish between R one C and R one B. I mean, it's the same. So I'm in favor of combining.
I concur, uh, what Bob just said, but I go I perhaps a little further to say that there are properties that meet the current R one B definition, current R one C and vice versa. That just makes it even more obvious.
Other thoughts? Right. I agree that it makes sense to, uh, combine these for whole host of reasons. Um, one is that it simplifies the the understanding of what you can and can't do and not constantly trying to you could be working on one, one parcel and then, you know, one street away, the rules are completely different. And in the past, I mean, eventually you work out, you figure it out, but it takes time. You know, and just, you know, working in the zoning ordinances all the time, it's really nice to have that. I actually was working out to, today on a project and I was looking at the realities of what I could do today under the existing code that's being enforced now versus a potential new one. So I was going back and forth between the two. And I was just amazed at how much more efficient was working in the one that the proposed one that we're working on and the formatting really made a huge difference. And so to that end, it was, you know, it took me twice as long to like work through the one that's enforced now versus the proposed one that we're working on. And the simplification of collapsing these into one just makes a lot of sense. And also it's hard, I agree with Bob. It's like, how do you draw the line? What's the rational division of these? Because these evolved over a long time and for a whole, whole set of reasons that really aren't that old today. All right, well, let's take, uh, the, the planning committee's temperature on combining the two districts. See where we are on that. Uh, Barry, what are you thinking about?
Yeah, I would vote to combine the two districts.
I would vote to combine the two districts.
Combine. Combine.
Chip? Keep separate.
Separate. Gene? Separate. Mark? Combined.
Combined. Is, is there a an argument for keeping separate other than it's the way it is today? Dimensions are different. All right. Gene?
I, it's a gut reaction, which isn't always fair, but I've always been told to trust my gut. What bothers me is why? I just think that I it's a gut reaction, which isn't always fair, but I've always been told to trust my gut. What bothers me is why, I just think that. Everything else makes sense to me, but when you think of Harbor and you're looking up at the bluff. I I like the size of the lots. I like, I get it that they're staying the same, but looking forward, who knows what can happen? And I just think that's kind of our statement. It's our town. It's it's part of who we've always been and having. As far as our old, my neighborhood that I grew up in, the one next down. The whatever it's called, Pinkley or whatever the subdivision it's called. I don't have an issue with the bluff is where it hits me. And I don't have it. It's all gut. I don't have any rationale behind it.
Alright, I come down in terms of combining because I just, you know, it's such a jumble. Lots aren't bigger or one district is being smaller. My street splits today's district and our lots are looking just like there. Don't need to put some splits to be clarity, I can down. Yeah, alright, looks like we have a decision on that one. Any more, any more ideas, catches or anything on the map?
Jeff, there's just one other little blob. It's kind of like the residential two family. It's right by Sergeant and Lake. Yeah, it's north of virtue court. What's that?
Good catch. Um you you know, we we looked at that and we noticed that when we were working on the spam and updating it and. So what happened with that? That used to be um part of R one C. And at some point, I don't remember if I I want to say maybe back in the nineties. The property owner made a request if he could change that property and put it in the R two district. And at that time, the planning commission had a public hearing and gave them permission.
Is it vacant?
It's it's currently a vacant piece. No, no, civil design. But yeah, we we just said, let's, for the current time.
Okay. I did wonder something that wasn't visualized.
Oh, so that that one apparently was rezoned to R two back in nineteen seventy seven. And so we just basically kind of when we were working on the map, uh said, well, do we wanna leave it as it currently is? Or change it to be similar to its neighbors? Planning commission can certainly have a discussion and see to that. To some extent, it's a little bit of spot zoning, but they did come in and present their argument of why they wanted to care to. And at that time, they were given permission. So we can, we can leave it as it is today, as it's shown, or we can change it to be similar to the neighboring homes. Stealing a page out of Chip's playbook. I I don't know how you can change that.
Take it with this opportunity.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it R two as it is. Okay, that sounds like we got the map pretty well nailed and what I picked up. On that were uh corrections on uh Old City Hall, probably uh Bay Hexagon House. And Blackford Museum and then Windermere, the Windermere Pines name on the, if not in the right.
And I can check where Windermere Pines actually is today. We, I know Jeff explained it. Why would you not make that RM? Cause that's really what it is today.
We could.
I'm just, I'm asking this.
Good question.
I mean, though they're not duplex. It seems, I mean, we have so little RM anyway, why would you not?
Is there any developable land in there? Is that? That depends on what district they're in. I mean, you know, in in R two, they're probably at like. I I'm making some assumptions here because I wasn't on doing any work, you know, when when this went in, I was twelve. Uh and actually I lived right next to an Ottawa Street at the time and watched them. Watched them remove the whole junk area that was kind of there and put this in. My guess would be that the applicant came to the planning commission and said, if I put a road in. And put single family lots on this, I can fit X number, twelve, twenty-four, whatever the number was. Instead of putting in single family lots and putting in that many number of duplexes. I'd instead like to put in the same number of units and do it as a quadplex instead. So they're probably at their maximum density by the zoning district that's permitted at this time. If we think that that's an appropriate location and by moving them into the RM district. And the rules that apply there, it might provide them with some more opportunity to build um some different things or to add. Second floor or something to those or or change the layout in some manner. Um they might not, they'd they'd have to go back and look at what opportunities that provided them. Uh but if we thought that that was a place that it could be done with minimal impact, then. Yeah, changing into RM.
We would bring them into compliance, right? Cause that's one law.
Well, I don't, I don't think that they're not in compliance now. They they went through a plan development process.
In terms of the zoning itself, an R two life can only have duplex. It would be every two and I mean, we've got one.
No, that's good question. What do you guys think?
Thinking RF now that I hear you. Alright, it's alright, gotta deal.
Yeah, the other question, do we tell or we notify the people on Ottawa Street that they are now. Not AR? Do we need to? How does that work? You just change people's designation? Ethically, what do we need to do there?
Well, so the rules are if if the number, if if we're working on a project and that project is ten or less. I believe that's the number, then you have to mail them and notify them directly. We're gonna have a discussion about your property and change. We're changing the entire city. We're changing all of the properties on the south side of Summit to our. You know, or whatnot. Actually, no, we're we're keeping R one B. We're we're getting rid of R one C. So realistically, all the R one C properties, we're not, we're not notifying them directly that we're changing. The district they're in. So yeah, when we're in excess of, I believe the number is ten. Um there is no requirement to do that, other than we we will put a notice in the paper about, hey, we're updating this only go, we're updating. Probably didn't have a conversation, but that's to effort of it.
Yeah, also, we're above five. Over two weeks, that'll be um on the city website, probably a broadcast. Uh probably on the city social media, probably private uh social media, publicize those two. And then we'll be having a public hearing, so. And that's same notice to everyone at the same time, so I think that's fair. Yeah, definitely take your point.
Me just ethically.
Okay, sounds like uh it's a wrap on the. Alright, let's go back to the code and we can talk about uses, dimensions and anything else that people have found. And. Laura's open, planning commission people, what do what do you see, what do you think about?
So I would like to uh bring up something I brought up at the end, up at the end of a meeting, maybe two meetings ago. Uh looking at section three, four, three. This is the dimensional requirements for residential neighborhood R one B.
What line?
Uh one thirty thirteen. Uh it relates to the rear and side setbacks for a one-story garage. Previously, that was allowed at five feet. I know uh it's complex with the the ADUs. Um and and so the one-story shed was set in there for a one-story building. Um I would like to see that one-story shed be changed to include a one-story garage. Um my my logic there is there, you know, certainly that was what was previously allowed. Uh if somebody wanted to put a second story on that that garage, then they would need to meet your requirements. For an accessory building, and if they didn't have a five-foot setback, then that would either be. You're not allowed or they'd have to modify the existing building. Um last time we talked about this, the concern was if a one-story garage was had a second story put on top, you know. Then the setbacks would need to be further, I understand that, but I don't think a current. Uh an existing one-story garage could be really reconfigured to have a second story on top with. Plumbing, electrical, structurally, um where's the staircase gonna go? Uh I think it's gonna require, I I can't see a scenario where a twenty-four by twenty-four. Foot two-car garage could have a second story on top without. And sign significant modification, which will probably remove include removal and and reconstruction according to the requirements for a two-story ADU.
I I just wanna caution on that. I I think we're really setting ourselves up for a lot of future issues with that. I I believe that half of our requests for guest quarters are taking an existing one-story garage and converting it to. Whether in some situations, they may be tearing down that garage and replacing it with a new two-story garage. But they most often would prefer to keep the locations. And so I think if we allow and say we're going to allow one-story garages to be that close to the property line. We're going to get many requests probably that if the rules are the way we're setting them up. They would have to go to the zoning board of appeals for variance. And if I think that that puts the zoning board of appeals in a very difficult position where they have to say no to somebody. You know, for whatever reasons, um or are they gonna say yes just out of guilt or something? I I think it it really is gonna create a lot of issues down the line if we do something like. And that's why we came up with that separate rule for sheds. We we could increase the size. Of sheds in some way to a slightly larger number, but I think going that way.
Tony, before you got here, we just confirmed uh shed definition.
Okay.
We settled on two hundred square feet or less and twelve feet height, but those could be five feet from the rear. Okay, and you're, I mean, to make sure I understand what you're suggesting, and that is that a one-story garage, which could be more than. Could be a five-foot setback from the rear uh as it is today.
Correct, as it is today.
Uh if I may, I actually was working on this uh project today. I mentioned earlier and it has to be is a project just like this. It's a existing garage that has to be, it's gonna become uh. Guest house, and so there's gonna be a second story, but I take the roof off. Put the second story on, this is set, you know, five feet off to. Things and everything, so it's allowed to do it in the code that is. Uh a lot, the code we're under right now allows that without a problem. Then, but if you look at going forward with a proposed one and the setbacks become ten feet. And it's a changed ballgame for me, cause then I believe that'd be an existing non-conformity. And so, and that actually raises a point where I was looking at uh some of the language, starting on. Line three ninety-one on page forty-five, enlargement or expansion of a non-conformity. Um in that it says that you are allowed to in- increase, expand them, but you can't increase. The area, which is sort of weird. Um and so for me, it comes down to. To answer your question first, you know, this can be done, it has been done a lot. Um but the area, if you can't increase the area, what's the definition of the building area, not buildable space, a buildable area, but. Then, we've talked about this before. And before I forget, also a non-conforming structure, so five point one one point five. You know, says in the first line that they can be replaced, but then later on down on line three seventy-eight, it says. Uh may uh repaired, man, shall not be so extensive as a constitute a replacement of the structure by replacing exterior walls. It seems like a conflict to me. So that's one page that's our focus in on today, actually working on a project here in Harbor Springs.
Yeah, that replacement language, we should make sure we're consistent on that.
Yeah.
I I I think a thing to keep in mind is um when we have had special land use requests for a two-story accessory building. That proximity to neighboring properties seems to be the one issue that is of a concern. You know, uh when they're setback in farther from the property line, neighbors have been like, hey, we love the. Um but when we get close to that side property line, it seems to be the primary one. Um we had a discussion just recently about a rear property line and. Pulling it back farther from the property line helped to ease that. And so that's why we just built right into the code where previously it was five and we're posing ten. But I I think that, you you know, we we get a lot of requests for people where they have an existing garage and they wanna add that second floor. And I think if we have a consistent, we're still gonna have some situations because, you know, we have a lot of existing garages that are out there. But I think having consistency, whether it's one-story or two-story with that size, uh will help eliminate the need for. Extra meetings, extra hard decisions. You know, in future meetings when somebody wants to just go on the second.
Right.
And and we, but we added in language where somebody wants is okay with a smaller building, then they, we have a shed definition. That could be still closer to kind of fill that gap of that need for people that just want a one-story.
So what are you advocating for setback on a two-story? Building the second story, what are you advocating?
Microphone, please.
So what what we, what we've talked about is for the side yard. The 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 accessory building, if it's gonna have a second floor, would need to meet the, or or really any um. Like full accessory building, the side yard setback would be the same as the principal building. And the, and and it's not a large increase, but it is a little bit of an increase. The side yard setback for an uh an accessory building used to be uh predominantly five. And that's increasing to eight, I believe. Um in the rear yard, the um side yard setback for an accessory building used to be five. For the principal building was thirty, and we're proposing for two-story accessory buildings. The side yard or the rear yard setback would increase from five to ten.
Okay, so you're advocating the increase to ten.
Yes, right. And and that comes from past planning commission meetings where we've had applicants coming in. With special land uses for um two-story accessory buildings with guest quarters. And that privacy issue has become a concern, that that amount of increase seemed to be sufficient. To address the concerns from neighbors, put them in a position where they didn't feel they were gonna be negatively impacted by that build. And then we put that as a condition, uh and 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 we've had, I think, at least three or four. Where where that has worked out very well, and that that's where we got the idea for this language in the new code.
Yeah, I I'm in agreement with that. I I just have a problem with. We'd be potentially creating non-conforming structures then, you know, like the one I mentioned. And so I do think we have to look at, if I have to do it now, you know, we have other things on the agenda, but I do think we have to look at. Enlargement or expansion of a non-conforming building, because right now, the way it reads, you know, it's a little confusing. I think it can be cleaned up very easily.
Well, one thing that we've talked about a few times.
Well, well, I was just gonna say that a simple fix for this would be when you talk about area, you're talking about, are you talking about? Floor area, meaning one level in the second level, or are you just talking about on the ground level? Footprint, so it's just footprint and then you add a second story, you're not increasing the non-conformity.
Correct.
Correct.
That's the.
Yeah, it doesn't really read that way, but that's the way I look at it. That's why I think it should.
It's all a planner, just like.
Yeah, that's the way I want it to be, but this, this is um, this is language from the old one. I think it's. Too much interpretation is left with the way it's written right now, it might.
Different communities have handled that in different ways. Some communities just address and say existing non-conformities is the footprint. Under the previous code, we had some, I don't know if those interpretations are are how it arrived, but we basically interpreted the code to be that it was. And then so that would take into consideration the height of the building, one story versus two. Um and we've had a lot of conversations at the zoning board of whether that was needed or not.
Right.
So certainly, if if we feel that we we can address that and provide more specific language, if we just want that to refer to the footprint of the structure. Um then, yes, it would potentially, we're, we are potentially creating some existing non-conformities. Um and but that's really just going to affect those and moving forward and but if we wanna change it so that it's not falling, it's just footprint. It would create those situations where they could then.
It's a simple problem, but yeah.
And and many other communities. And and many other communities, uh, I believe, Patsy, for example, when they look at that, it's just. They they do not consider adding a second floor to an existing nonconformity to to be worsening the non. And that's kind of the language that we're referring to in that, um, nonconforming structures such as. We do, we will allow somebody to add on to the structure as long as the addition does not worsen the nonfallacy. So if you have a garage that's half in, half out of setback. You could enlarge that garage with no problem within your buildable area. You just couldn't enlarge the footprint of the garage outside of.
Agree.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Good. Okay, I'm not sure I followed all of that. Uh, Mark, do you think, uh, we're okay based on the interpretation you just heard from Jeff and Jenny?
Yes, as long as that area refers to the the footprint area, it's not not floor areas.
Footprint, certain footprint.
Certain word footprint? Yeah, and then then it solves the question, because it's a big gray area.
He also says that there's inconsistencies with some of the words, was it demolish or?
Yeah, yeah, this up on, I'm I'm sorry, this up on nonconforming structures. On my five, three sixty-three says, you you can replace them, but then down on line. Three seventy-eight, three seventy-nine, they say that cannot be so extensive as it constitutes a replacement. And that and that's it, again, that's a judgment by call, and so I think that should just be struck out.
All right, here's here's what I'm gonna ask, Mark, do you think you could provide a markup? What you think this should be?
I think you have the response.
I've got a response. What we have found was people play games where their building is nonconforming. And then the provision says that you can expand, then what they do is they tear three or four, three or three and a half. Of the walls down, and they leave one piece of the structure up. And so what this provision says is, you can repair and maintain it. So long as it's so, so it's not so extensive that you're replacing all of the exterior walls. Otherwise, there's no way to get rid of the nine.
But but it says on, I I I understand that, but on three sixty-three, it says that. It says, thank you, it says that they can be replaced. Which article are you in here?
Uh, it's on page forty-five.
Twenty-one point five, forty-five.
You can, you can replace some portions of a nonconforming building. As long as it's not so extensive that you're basically rebuilding. That, because that that way, the, you're, you're not, the reason why a building is not conforming. Is because it doesn't conform to the code, and in the long-term objective is, is to remove it. So if you tear everything down but one little piece of the building and then rebuild it, rebuild it. Then we're, we're, we don't have a mechanism to get rid of it eventually. So that's why that provision is there. You can, you can, you can modify it, you can repair it. As long as the repair and the modification is is not so extensive that you're basically rebuilding a nonconforming house.
Yeah, that that makes sense, but then we should change on three sixty-three, because we're saying it can be replaced. Parts of it can be replaced, but I would argue that it's the whole thing.
No, if you, if you go down to section C, three eighty-four, we provide the language of when they can replace. And if and if it's basically some type of act of got fire, flood.
Right.
You know, that's the situation where they could replace. Does that make?
I said correct.
Yeah, but just some clear.
Uh, let's, okay, so you're okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, and and so the original question, Tony, was, should we allow a one-story accessory building five feet? Uh, rear inside setbacks in our one B, or do we stick with the ten that we're proposing?
I'd just like to clarify, but I think I heard you said, so there was an existing one-story garage that was. In s- that was somewhere between five and ten feet on one or both of those setbacks. And there was an expansion requested. It could be expanded as long as it was not on one of the setback sides of the structure.
Let's say that I have a once, an existing one-story garage that is five feet from my property line.
Mm-hmm.
What we're proposing is by stating that you cannot enlarge the footprint, is I would be able to add a second floor to that. However, let's say that I do not currently have an existing one-story garage. What we're proposing is that that new one-story garage would have to be ten feet from the property.
But no expansion of footprint.
No expansion, yeah, so with my, let's say that my existing current one-story garage that's only five feet from the property is twenty-four by twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
I could add a second floor to that, it could be twenty-four by twenty-four. If I wanted to enlarge that to be twenty-four by thirty-six, and I had the, I met all the other rules. I would not be able to enlarge that in a way that was more footprint within five feet of the property. Anything else added that I add would have to be at least ten feet from the side yard or rear yard line.
Okay.
Is that, is that clear?
That's great, thank you.
Okay, sounds like we're gonna keep the ten-foot setback methodology. All right, two good decisions right there. All right, who else has something they'd like to?
I'd like to have some discussion about the administrative review process.
Yeah.
Do that tonight, or?
Yeah, now's the time.
Yeah, tell me about it.
Is that article two, third, eight? Just wanna make sure we pull this up so we can look at it.
So in our use table, we do not have even page letter for for. It's all either by right or special land use or not permitted. Where? It's on page eighty-four.
Right there.
Your uses table.
Oh, you're in two different areas of the document.
Yes.
Well, let's, let's, let's clarify.
Okay.
Do we mean administrative review, which, a a site plan review, like if someone wants to build a new residential home. And I review that that site plan zoning application administratively to approve it. Or planning commission, where they review just the site plan, not a special land use, just a commercial site plan, that's an administrative review. Um, and and we, you know, basically through that review process. We're making sure that they meet all the rules and requirements that we've set up in the zoning code. Versus on page eighty-four, we have administrative review committee. And what that is, is an intermediate step between my my administrative review. And administrative review by the planning commission. Let's say that throughout time, we decide that, uh, a certain type of site plan that normally would come to the planning commission. You feel that you don't need to be burdened with that, that we can provide some, th- this is a a medium in between. Where an applicant, you guys could decide, we're just gonna do it by the committee. So it's a step up where I don't get to be the only person that has a say. But that we could name other people that would be part of this committee, and that committee would review it. And they can meet more frequently than once a month, like the planning commission. So if the opportunity, if we feel appropriate to. Progress the things a little faster for a property owner, uh, in a, in a cheaper atmosphere for them. Currently, we don't have anything under administrative review committee. Everything is either administratively approved by myself. Or administratively approved by the planning commission, right, or special. I think it might be a good idea to leave this in, in case we decide in the future. You know, and it could be, Jeff, we don't think you're approving these correctly, if we wanna step up and take it away from you and move it to the committee. Or it could be, you guys don't wanna be burdened with it anymore, you don't think that you need to discuss it at a public meeting, and then it can drop down.
So you just want to propose the vehicle, but not actually change how we're doing it today?
Yeah.
Okay.
And and that's something that on that table, with all the you, the rules where we have Ps and the Ss. We could have another symbol on there for that, if we feel that we wanna move something to that.
We did not come down that way when we were dealing uses, so it's dormant.
But it allows for it.
If we wanna change it.
That's the framework. All right, what else do they have people seeing?
I have some things on the table in three point two, uh, page eight. Um, see that we have automotive service stations allowed in central business district by special use. Now, we used to have them historically, I propose we take that out. We have special use for service stations allowed in B one. Permitted in B two, but that's sufficient, given the pedestrian-centric nature of the central business district, I. I see that as a conflict.
Yeah, that's a good catch. I had a tumble to that one when we were doing the table. So do we think we ought to have, uh, gas stations in the central business district?
Is there a differentiation between gas stations or automotive repair sections?
You've got definition, yes.
Me as a.
We have automotive repair in the B two district.
Right. As a special user.
Special respect. And I kind of agree with Kenny that, I think historically, you've had gas station in the CBD, but you don't really find gas.
About the gas station, I don't wanna repair it.
Yeah. Yeah, I I agree, we ought to take gas stations out of the central business district, especially with. What we've all learned about water, you know, groundwater and fuel tanks and that stuff, it should not be. Down here, agree?
Agree.
Agree.
Sold, Kenny?
Right, a lot of rolls. Um, I can't tell you exactly the location, but lodging establishments. Um, it's available currently in CBD and B two. But not in B one, see that as no mission. I'd recommend special use for lodging establishments in B one. Anybody find it yet?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, it's on that same page.
Same page, okay. Halfway down.
Our proposal is allow lodging establishments in B one by special land use?
Yeah. Does that make sense?
That's great, you keep it in CBD or take it out?
I'd keep it in.
B two, keep it in. I would say take it out and just add it.
All right.
Right, two for two. Uh, next one, I recommend adding retail general. As a P in B one for similar logic, because it's also today, it, today it is in CBD. And B two, honestly, so again, I see that as a bit of an omission, why not in B one?
I agree, yeah. Right.
Uh, where is that?
Again, on page eight, there's the retail section, and then we have food, general, and.
Generally, you're talking about, retail, yeah.
Yeah, retail general.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'll take cemeteries for four hundred and eighty. Uh, page seven, public quasi-public, there's a line item for cemetery, but realize this is. Somewhat of an academic requirement. Um, it's been in AR, it's shown in AR, I vaguely remember a discussion, oh, they have moved it. To industrial, um, I have no strong feelings either way, this one I'll clarify, did we accurately get it right? Anybody remember us?
Kenny, as you know, I, that's, that was my recollection, is that it was in AR. I don't have a strong feeling.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lisa, Nicole, we were, you were joking about.
But you guys, if you don't do it, they're gonna speak it somewhere. So I'm looking at that, um, what is it, I one, is that what we're calling industrial?
Yeah.
And down by that wild stream, that'd be on a plate, right? That area there?
Yeah.
Why don't we speak it there?
Um, John just mentioned the sideline, we may not need a cemetery requirement within city limits at all.
Wow.
Right, I was under the threat, and we had to provide it somewhere.
There's a breakthrough?
It wasn't.
You can take it out.
Yeah, I propose to take it out of the city limits. Well, that's a good solution, wanted to sign a cemetery. Nobody could die.
But why? I'd say why? Why? Why no cemetery?
Because the the land is more important for people that are still standing.
No.
If someone wants to have a cemetery, it's not too far to get outside this, uh, city.
Yeah, is it in the best interest of the community to use land for a cemetery versus housing, for instance? Okay, let's, I come to closure on this, Phil, we take cemeteries out as a use completely in the city.
Having an average age of sixty-two and going up, I mean, yeah, right.
Seventy feelings, you allow cemeteries in the city, is in graves, or not, on travel? Pardon me?
Their graves down of all the trouble.
Yeah, a little disrespectful. Yeah, I don't, I don't like it. I mean, I'm gonna go to Jenny's.
There is.
I don't like not having a cemetery.
There is a provision within the, um, community property for historical. Cemetery, something like that, uh, you guys could find it quicker than I could. But, uh, so so there's that. If if you wanna keep a cemetery within the state limits, I'm not gonna fight you on it, just seems unusual, given where we are in land use. If you put it in AR.
Yeah, so you're saying that a single-family mansion is more valuable than a cemetery where people. Remains are and families go and visit and.
Going to force me to be cremated or buried at sea? Darren, do you have an idea?
Phil, thanks. Um, in the last meeting, you were saying, I think the example was sectionally oriented businesses. If you didn't provide for it somewhere, it could go anywhere. So isn't it the same with cemeteries or no? Because I agree, cemeteries are not a good land use for the city, but you have to provide for it.
There's no litigation on it.
There's no litigation on cemeteries, there's a lot of.
So we're not obligated to, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. I mean, the other option is, the way that the regulated news tape is set up, is that if the, if the cell is blank. It's not permitted. You can keep cemeteries as a use, but you don't have to show it of where it goes. And then under the administrative and enforcement, uh, provisions. The zoning administrator has the ability, if somebody comes in and proposes a use that is not in the code. He can bring that before the zoning board of appeals, ask them what where they think it's appropriately located.
Yeah.
I mean, historically, cemeteries are also green spaces. And historically, in cities, cemeteries would be the only place where. People could have grass and and could be on a quasi-public property. And now we're saying it's not gonna be quasi-public, it's not gonna be green space, it's gonna be a single-family mansion.
My opinion is we have city parks for that. But, um, if if you are strongly in favor of including cemeteries, then I can go along with you. I live in the RA district, so if they put it there, I'll have quiet neighbors.
Yeah, all right, uh, hearing all this, I'm gonna propose we leave cemeteries in as a use. We've done it in special in RA.
Can we move that to community?
Yeah, a community, I think, we could put it in a community too. How do you feel about that as a special land use in community or cemetery?
In addition or replace?
In addition.
All right, I was.
Could I say replacement?
Okay, you're not warm on that idea, so let's leave it, that's it. All right. What else you got, Kenny?
Uh, just two things clerical, there is an RA label that was jumbled earlier, I don't have a thought that. And the other was page nine, the title for industrial should be, um, I one, not him one.
Mm-hmm.
Have you caught that or not?
That was caught also.
Okay. Um, I have another question, can you, uh, section three point four point one, the table on dimensions. Uh, specifically. M H P. The mobile home park, just a clarification. Eight sixteen, thank you. Um, clarification, I I don't totally understand that. The minimum floor area per unit. Is one thousand two hundred square feet. Um, sounds large. It's larger than the minimum for like um, R one B. Is that correct, or is that referring to the lot space where? The unit sits?
Actually, the. This since it was published that this was charts change. We 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 determined at the last meeting that there would be no single family. In the mobile home district. So every one of these citations that say fifteen feet for a single family dwelling, thirty-five feet for a single block. Single family, those have all been deleted. As well as the school footage that you left.
John, that was also the case for um. Residential multiple, I think.
Residential.
Yeah, all all that was taken back and that was on the stuff that I sent you in the thing, right?
Alright, so you guys found that previously and.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Uh, shall I continue?
Yeah.
I I don't wanna filibuster here. Okay, uh, in RM residential multiple. And apologies, that on the the page or the line seventeen. Good one, thank you. Um. I realize these units are unique, and I'm not advocating for a change, but I thought it'd be worthy of a brief discussion. Could we specify a minimum floor area? Uh, such as eight hundred and sixty-four, which is referenced some of the other zones. Um, if we don't, then the first floor area could be as small as they want, which might be okay, given the uniqueness of those buildings. I just wanted to raise that, see where your temperatures are.
I think a building, any type of new building that would be built within the RM district. Um, since we've removed a single family. Would be coming to the planning commission for review. Um, and I think that because there's that higher level of review taking place where we're taking more things into consideration. Proximity to neighbors, screening, parking, all of that. Um, not putting in a minimum provides us some flexibility. For each plan and what we think is appropriate for that site. Whereas if you put in a minimum, uh, you're you're removing some of that flexibility for us. That's just my opinion. Um, but we can certainly put something in if we feel it's appropriate. My my recommendation, if we were to do a minimum, is that we maybe have it smaller than a single family dwelling. Uh, because it is an apartment.
Yeah.
My thought is since you brought that out, that it will be coming for a more rigorous review anyway, that that would be sufficient. That way we can give the architects the freedom they need to to do what they want.
Alright, we okay to leave?
Events then?
Yeah. Great, okay.
Alright. Um, article four point three. Speaks to signage within uh, the city. Um, I propose that we add um, another ingredient, and that is. That we restrict the use of. Neon lettered signs, like electronic sign boards. And my rationale is that um, takes away from the historical character of downtown. Somebody's gonna scream, what about Bar Harbor? I understand. Um, as far as I know, the other example might be um. People that has that open sign, paper station, paper station, okay. So my my thought here is that if we put this in the code, it would um. Discourage proliferation of these signs. What do we do with current cases? That's about uh enforcement, and I don't need to go there tonight. But I I rest on a philosophical point of view that the charm, the character, one of those things defined as a little bit more timeless way.
Actually, many of the planning commission members may not remember this, or may not have been on the planning commission at the time, but. Very early on in our process of deciding that we're going to develop a new zoning code. We actually made the decision, we're removing all of our signage regulation from the zoning code. And we're going to be, after we finish with the zoning code review, developing a separate ordinance specific for signage. And we will get into all the details with all of that at that time. Um, it's going to be a more of an in-depth review, probably on staff. Um, there's certainly a lot of opportunities where we're going to need feedback from the planning commission. There's been a lot of changes in legislation on how signage can be regulated, specifically in regards to content. So. We're we're gonna pull all of that out and have it as a separate ordinance.
That makes sense. Um, it's just protecting for the future as well, without being overly protected. Alright, my last few things, if you allow me to. If I'm now, is there largely wordsmithing in article three point two? Uh, which begins on page two. And if we go to line twenty-six. It speaks to um. He intend to be used for. See, I'm sorry. Here we go, it's in the RA district. Um. The district is designed to allow for the development of larger lots and family homes. Um. It struck me as we're allowing farming, and we know the state has certain points of view on that. So I'd recommend changing the word allowed to better enable. Um. So that it's just a little more directional. And gets away from any state provisions regarding farming. I'm sorry, this is line twenty-seven, also allowing commercial agricultural operations, that's what I meant.
I I think maybe allowing is the right verb. Um, I don't know that we're encouraging. We wanna encourage.
I just said better enable. But that's fine. Wanted to bring it up now, so that we stayed away from states saying anybody can be a farmer.
Oh, they're they're gonna say that anyway, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a matter of manful.
Okay, like if you're lukewarm at best, we can take that out, I'll strike that. Um. Last three things I have, um, beginning on line sixty-five. When you read through the different descriptions of of the different zones, I think they're very, very concise. And very objective, the way a zoning code needs to be. But then when you get to some of the commercial districts, there's some added language that's a little bit um. Less descriptive, a little bit more like a tour magazine than a zoning code.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm suggesting we remove some of that language. I think it's correct. I I like the wording, but I just don't see it as being. Necessary in a zoning code. Um, specifically line sixty-five, I recommend we remove nestled along the scenic shores of Little Traverse Bay. That doesn't help to describe the zone. So. If I'll I'll take that and pause. I have a couple others.
Um, how do people feel about deflowering some of this kind of language and making it more concise?
I deflower it, but not total. Okay, um, I think it's important to say Harbor Springs Century Business, it's charming and wobbly.
Okay.
Uh, that's still flowery, but it's. I agree, I agree with Kenny about the nest around shores.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, Chip, after agreeing on this phrase.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, line seventy-two. And beyond, give it a blending local commerce culture and connection. Remove the entire sentence that starts with anchored by small, whatever it is, and this is line seventy-two. Anchored by small owned businesses, it provides a walkable. Um. Yes, it does, but again, this is this is kind of getting off the use. Remove the sentence, streets are designed for people. Um, that's a good filter of case value of context. Um, and then change the last sentence. Uh. This section. To read, this district supports businesses that provide additional services above and beyond what is offered in the CBD. To me, that describes the why do you have this uh, a little bit more to the point.
Above and beyond, you like that?
Above and beyond what is offered in the CBD, yes. Where it's above, above what? Well, beyond. Beyond what? Beyond the services that are allowed in CBD, because it's more restrictive on what you can have.
I can provide some of those. It's better not currently allowed.
Correct, yeah, if you have better words, that's fine, but the idea is to say there are expanded usages available in these other outer districts.
I think it's important to keep that the streets are designed for people, and that's just smart streets, that speaks to ADA. That speaks to um, spaces for people, and it's not for the car. So we want it designed for the car. So I I think it's important that. It the people spaces stays. Yeah.
Okay, trying to think how we can do this efficiently uh, without uh wordsmithing altogether as a group of twenty-five people.
Um. If you'd like, um, you know, if we look at some of the other districts like ROS, it really kind of talks about. The style and use of that district. Where CBD and B one seem to be more flowery and and sales pitch. If you'd like, um, maybe John and I can take a look at figuring out a way to just. Describe the type of uses that we're promoting in that area and come back at the next meeting.
Or the next version, which is imminent.
Correct, yeah, that that's fine. I I don't intend to over hack and chop here, I just think that again, these were written.
Are you okay with empowering John and Jeff to tighten these up a bit?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I agree with Chip, that sudden flowery. Speak is uh, is appropriate here. I I really do think so. I I mean, I think the the what was the first one that you brought up?
Nestled.
Nest, yeah, that one I think is over the top. Uh.
It's permissional.
Yeah.
Sure.
Permission.
Oh, Mark.
Oh, what about adding something about the centrality of focus for community? In the central business district and the downtown business, about referencing. The historic uh, uh, focus for the city. In those districts and how we might wanna keep that.
That's interesting, the idea. Why don't you shoot a quick paragraph to Jeff? I mean, a fragment of a paragraph. Yeah, I did, I think Karen wants.
This um, Karen's route, I I answered, is there a better place for like an introduction of the assumptions we're meeting? We doing the zoning or updating the zoning code? Like, this is who our city is, this is what we're about, this is what's important to us. And that is kind of like a general introduction to the new zoning code. And then kind of covers out some of the statements that are made right here, which I think are really legitimate, that what a lot of the conversations have been about. We don't wanna change things, we wanna be like we've been, because of the very good state law.
Good.
And so there's a place for that at the beginning.
Just take on them.
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
I I tried to. Capsulize what I heard from the audience over the last year about the character of the community. And the the purpose of these statements are, is that when the planning commission is reviewing. Like a development project, it should be reviewed with what's the purpose and the intent of the district. Well, you wanna have things in there like, you know. Uh. A mix of storefronts, cafes, community spaces and residents in a historically or architecturally distinctive buildings. Because if somebody comes in and wants to build something that is totally out of character. You can go back and say that's not the intent of the code. So this this part of the code, article two, is defining the character of the community. So, yeah, I was kind of kidding with Kenny before the meeting, it sounds Chamber of Commerce. Type, but you wanna be able to paint a really nice picture of how this district should function. And the the difference between the B one and the B two is. The B one is more pedestrian oriented, the B two is more vehicular, so you want the intent to communicate that. So I kind of agree with Vanessa with, I think it's important that streets are designed with sidewalks, street trees. That enhance pedestrian activity. So that's the context. I can go over with Jeff.
Yeah, well, that all makes a lot of sense, Dan. They can, Kenny sound kind of mean.
I used to be the be in the automotive industry, so when streets are designed for people.
Yeah.
Okay, so I I agree with with your direction.
Well, it sounds like these guys will take another crack at tighten things up a little bit, but. Um, you know, John, I like your explanation of why and it's fair, that's take service for serve as well.
I support that, and that's the last of my chains. Thank you all for your patience.
Certainly, I want to say special thanks to Bob and Penny for really going deep on the document over the weekend. I mean, they found a lot of minor stuff that we don't have to talk about today. It's brilliant. Okay, I've got one, and it's an important one. And it's uh, plan development. And we have to uh, select tonight the districts where plan development, where someone can apply for a plan development. And in today's code. Where am I? Oh, um. Page ninety-three. There's a blank for the districts themselves. Line sixty-four on page ninety-two.
It made this document so long.
We did. Three, page. So right there. There should be a blank.
He's got it real, yeah, you know, insert districts.
Insert districts. So this is the process where someone could bring us a creative proposal for something that they'd like to build. And it um, would be different than the vanilla zone. And we uh, we've scrubbed this thing up three times at least. And decided that it was a good thing, that we would like to see creative proposals. Um, by definition, things that are better for the community would be the only things that would be approved. And so now we just need to figure out what districts issue going. And today. Uh, we have this kind of a convoluted, fractured uh, planned unit development. Uh. Process in the existing code, and it's in a part of the CBD, but not all the CBD. So as a minimum, I'm thinking we would want. Uh, plan development in our CBD going forward.
Do we have an example of what this would look like?
No.
Okay, just something.
Something that someone would think of, it could be a mixed-use commercial, residential, it could be.
The cottage company is a current land unit development, CBD. For some example that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think they can take on many different forms, right? Um, the cottage company's new building on Main Street. Is part of a CBD, even even the residential homes on Base Street were part of that uh, plan development. Um, we have. Winmere Heights, which was a P U D, but essentially like a development. We also have, um, I think the Bay Street cottages may have been. So it can, they can form in many different ways. But the idea is, is that there, it's somebody looking to do something that deviates from the normal zoning practices in some way. And you have some way to. Adjust your plan for a way that might better fit the community. Adjust your plan for a way that might better fit the community.
And it doesn't always mean density, it could be somebody trying to create. More green space, central green spaces, putting the houses. Off a little bit different to allow for more green space or stormwater, so it's not.
Is that a cluster housing or is that?
Yeah, we, we allow both.
Right.
And, uh, P, uh, plan development might be a bigger, slightly bigger scale, and with our lack of land.
It, it may not, but it's not necessarily a density issue.
Or a bad thing, in fact, you know, the, the bar is so high. On our processes, just, it can take months or years and. Multiple hearings and city council is the ultimate approver and. So, I'm not scared by it, and I, I welcome it because we've said we wanted creative proposals. With all the, all the safety net that we have built in, I think it's a good thing.
Currently it's only in the CBD.
No, is where it gets confused.
I mean, in the code.
It can actually be anywhere.
Isn't Birch, is Birch Court, was that a planned unit development? The one up off Anne Street? There's a couple of them. Birch Court, it might have been.
It, it's hard to say, if, you know, there's Birch Court, Easy Street, some of those other things.
It's residential area.
I don't know that they necessarily went through the plan development process, they may have been more of a buy right. You know, the, the recent review and approval of the Claret Court property. Is in line with that, where that wasn't a planned development process, but it was a condominium review. So I don't know that Birch Court or.
Yeah, you know, it's a planned development, huh? Harbor Point Association.
Yeah, so it can be residential.
Mister Chairman, you may want to. Change the orientation of A to say. The properties are, the PD can be allowed in all districts except for.
I see.
And then. Define the ones that you don't want to do, for example, industrial would be a good one. Uh, community, you know, obviously you can't have a PD in a community district, but. I, I would encourage. The planning commission to really look at the PD as a kind of an innovative. Development tool, because it really. Plan development is a development agreement between the city council eventually and the developer. So it, it provides a lot of flexibility for the city as well as the developer, but it really allows the city to. Exact. Other concessions that they would not normally get by using just the standard zone.
And by concessions, you're talking about potentially more green space than would otherwise be required.
Great, greater. A more enhanced, better building materials, better architectural detailing.
Retail can be incorporated in that, right? Question, what would trigger declining? Such a project, other than subjective nature?
Well, you don't really see PDs, you don't see planned developments per se. In industrial districts, you see a lot of site condos in industrial districts, which the ordinance already allows.
You wouldn't want them in community.
You wouldn't want them in community, no.
Okay, I, I agree that, you know, we could choose the areas where we may not allow them, but if, if we allow them. I'm just thinking of some future meeting, any planned. Development that's creative and all that stuff, is there any criteria to reject it or not?
There, there. Yeah, we, when we went through. We were pretty, pretty confident about it's an extremely high bar. And somebody would. Really have to. Committed to doing this because it's gonna cost a lot of money even to apply and to get through this. Planning Commission, City Council is gonna be rough as heck.
Given that, I, I like the direction that John has suggested, allow everywhere except. Yet.
I agree, Kenny. Okay.
And that's obviously a special site for plan develop.
Yep, I, yeah, let's figure out what's in and what's out.
Aaron.
Hey Bill, I'm here to have a good use of note, you cited Harbor Point, and I think that's a great example because. They P U Ded Harbor Point and it divorced them from West Traverse in a sense of some regulation. What is a little bit, and, and John, maybe you can clarify this if I'm wrong. When Harbor Point went P U D, they in essence govern themselves to a degree. So they can do their own demolitions without having to come to West Traverse Township, so to blanketly say, hey, let's P U D everything. I, I think that's dangerous, I, I don't think you wanna do that.
No, the, 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 the P U D for Harbor Point. Is a development agreement that was negotiated between. That association and West Traverse Township, and it was primarily done because of the number of variances. That the township was getting because of the, the lot sizes. In Harbor Point are small relative to the size of the homes, so every time somebody wanted to do something. They were constantly going for variance, so they decided to create the P U D. So Harbor Point actually has its own design standards, and that was negotiated between. The planning commission and West Traverse Township and the association, but formally approved by their board trustees.
I, I get that, but it makes it much easier, and that's exactly why, because I went to the meeting, so they didn't wanna keep going back and forth.
What they did is they used the P U D to clear up inconsistencies with the, how the zoning code was being applied, it's not. It's not that they were giving a free rein over all of their property. It was to clean up inconsistencies between how the properties were developed and how they, they have to apply the current modern standards. So again, it gets back to this issue that using a current, a modern zoning code, overlaying it. On property that was historically developed a hundred years ago, and it just doesn't work. So, that was the reason for the, the P U D, the lawyers got together. And said, how can we figure this out, they were actually thinking about creating its own zoning district, but then they thought the easiest way to do it. Between both the parties was to use a P U D and have a negotiated development agreement.
Yeah, I got it, but now they can do their own demolitions without having to go to the township or having to hear any comments from.
But again, that's the way that they structure their P U D. Any P U D is an applicant coming in and saying, hey, here's what I could do by right. Right, I could, I could build a subdivision, I could, I could build a new auto west. But, the idea for the plan that I have. Here's where I would deviate from zoning, here are the special concessions that I might want to ask for. In order to build the street that I would like to see, that I envision, and does the city see that same vision? And it allows the planning commission, it doesn't mean by default you're giving all those rights away to the applicant. Right, the planning commission and, and city council would get to decide. Which rights do we feel are appropriate to give away, but then it also puts in place a method. That we say, we're willing to give you this if you're willing to give us this. Let's say for whatever reason, the city of Harvestville, we hate the color neon pink. We could say, we'll let you build one foot closer to a property line if you're willing to guarantee that that house is never gonna be painted in yellow and pink. You know, those are the types of given to, obviously that's silly one, but those are the things, is you can have that give and take discussion. To determine what works for your community, and it doesn't mean that you have to give away the farm. And give away all your rights to be able to administrate, you know, you can pick and choose what works for you.
Yep, I get that, just my last comment is just realize whatever you're deciding on zoning now, in essence. It can be changed in the future because a future planning commission can say, yes, we agree with whatever consent you want. As opposed to saying, you're there zoning, and we want this to go for, as long as it's viable. Unfortunately, planning commission changed that, not a developer negotiating with. That's my own.
Hmm, okay. I was talking about us.
Yeah, thank you.
And I take the point, so what? Can you think what districts we might wanna exclude?
I'll go waterfront, industrial and community, sure. And I'm also kind of waffling on. Mobile home park.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'd like to kind of protect that, which now, we don't have a lot of. Land devoted to mobile home park.
And why not industrial, just?
I, I did say industrial.
No, why, 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 you might not have it.
Why not have it in industrial, because we have a limited amount of space for industrial as well, I, I'm just trying to be mindful of the fact that. You could eat up the entire industrial park for the plan.
Waterfront is a community asset.
That's why.
I, I would say. Those exclusions. Makes sense to me, and if somebody wanted to bring a proposal for the waterfront district, they could do that. And the, then the planning commission could decide if they wanted to extend. The plan and development to the district.
Yeah. I don't know, waterfront to me is, is pretty sacred.
Yes, ma'am.
Man mods, um, I am wondering, uh, is this applicable in our residential areas? Did someone come in, tear down historic homes and put in? Cluster homes or some sort of planned development like that, what protects us from that happen?
Yeah, you, you ought to read check, what article is it, ten? Ten, article ten is.
Page ninety three.
Really, a lot of protections in there. Then, of course, we have such little vacant land in our existing neighborhoods. And the values are so high that I think the risk of anybody tearing down tens of hundreds of houses. Is something that's pretty small. We felt pretty confident, Karen.
So, um, out west in Colorado, that's what they do, that's what they did, it's totally unrecognizable. But back to a little bit about NAMM, um, the. The, I guess, I guess the thing that, there, there's five to seven objectives in the, in the plan development. And from a couple people that have looked at it and everything, uh, some of them say that there's just not enough T. In those, those five to seven objectives of what allows a, a plan development to be approved or get disapproved. So I remember our meeting, um, uh, some months ago. Where we talked about plan development and it would be nice to review those objectives again, that's what I'd like to ask. And then the second thing is, um, in terms of the, uh, amount of. Time that you're going to, uh, allow the, the general public and the community to know about PD. I think it's, I think it's short, it could be longer, um, because it's going to affect our community so much.
Mark. Um, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, uh, the waterfront district, a lot of it's private property. And so those people have rights to use their property. That we are very protected the waterfront by certain limitations of how much bill for views, all that kind of stuff. So all the protections are there, there might be a, a, a way to have a different type of development there, but you still. Would, you know, you have to work with the planning commission and with staff and everybody to make sure that it meets. Or you even get a better deal as far as what you can see there. And the idea that comes to my mind right away for a P U D was, where you could increase the density. By some, um, you know, mechanism of, you know, of, of, you know, smaller square footages. Uh, slightly higher buildings or something like that, and you can. Arrange them in such a way and condense them enough that you've got to maybe increase the amount of area that you can see the lake from. Because, you know, obviously the waterfront this community, that's off the map already, but rest of the waterfront, that's its private property. And we've protected the community, as I said, by already having limitations on it, so I don't see why it really needs to be excluded. Specifically excluded from, uh, a planned development.
It has potential that opens more to the public actually, in the plan development.
That's, that's the point, that's what somebody wants to do, could be trade off, you could actually make it more. Or, because that's what everybody wants, if you weren't doing anything other than that.
Comment on the floor was it could actually give a way to open up more property for use by the public. With the right kind of design. How do we feel when we allow waterfront?
Yeah, I, I take Mark's point, I would, in that context, I would.
It sounds like what we're excluding would be. The industrial. A community and mobile home park.
And I think, to Karen's point, we just, I think we need to make sure that we have all privilege there, just to make sure that. Something can't sneak through or get through.
All right, planning commission, remember if you want to look at article ten again, see if you have any thoughts. How do you might want to change on that and, you know, think up, think up quickly. Okay, that's all I had. So we are actually at the point where we just okayed the draft learning map. We adjusted the draft ordinance. And we are at a point where we have to decide. Is this, are we satisfied, is this complete enough that we're ready to? Hold five open houses in the first weeks of September. And to schedule a public hearing for our next regular meeting, September fourteenth. Thank you. Let's take it one at a time, do we feel good enough to have, uh, to put out the invitations to public open? Yes, yes, yes.
So you're from the public.
And two. Um, Jeff would need to know now if we wanna have this, uh, public hearing. On September eighteenth, because he's got a notice period that he needs to meet.
Just to clarify, is that notice period to hold the meeting or is that? It doesn't, the, the document doesn't have to be finalized, is there a requirement for how long before that meeting document has to be final?
I guess by strict definition, it doesn't have to be a document, you know, it could be a public hearing about anything.
Okay, try to make sure the word.
Yeah, I think the idea would be that if, if we're, if we're gonna schedule a public hearing. We would have a version of the document that we feel is ready for the public to review en masse. And then we would be bringing that, obviously, it still makes some adjustments to it as needed, even at that public hearing meeting. Further, further review and updates and changes as we see fit.
But the point of the public hearing is to get input, you may hear something that we want to adjust.
Okay.
So, we need a really quite a thorough, complete draft copy, which I think we're gonna have in the next day or two. Yes, yes, John, yes, the rich can be posted on the city website. Everyone can look at that for two or three and a half weeks, I think it is, before a public hearing. Feel good about scheduling that?
Yes.
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 Bill, I, you know, I had trouble finding it, um, on the, on the city website. So if you do that, put it on page one in big red letters, so that even challenged people. Technically challenged people can find it, by the way.
All right, point A. Do we need to vote? To schedule a public hearing? Do we all need to vote right now in there or?
Yeah, I think a, a, a motion to schedule a public hearing would be appropriate, and we do have a section on the website where we have those, our news articles. Uh, and if we wanted something more robust, we could maybe do something. Uh, and if we wanted something more robust, we could maybe do something as well.
Well, let's go to someone like make the motion, schedule a public hearing. On September eighteen, five thirty PM. To review the draft design code.
I'll make motion to schedule a public hearing, September eighteen, five thirty PM to review the design code.
Second.
Second, all right, Jeff, we were all to all vote.
Mark Fadain.
Yes.
Jeff Evans. Tony Johnson.
Yes.
Kenny Stewart. Yes. Vanessa Ward.
Yes.
Jeanne Benning.
Yes.
Bob Bunker.
Yes.
Barry Lester.
Yes.
Bill Haller.
Yes. Okay. Well, it's good work, guys, and.
Overlay district.
Oh.
District Review Committee, uh, zoning administrator.
This is in where?
The, uh.
Oh, overlay text, okay. John, Chip just found in the shoreline protections thirty four. Oh, um, it said, have the checkbox for administrative review committee. In a table there, and so we have not activated.
The administrative review committee. Administrative review committee. Maybe I was not following track in what you guys were talking about. Under section eight point five point five, the administrative review committee is established. Okay, it's it's a function if at some point you want to run a plan by there. But the way that the overlay was set up, rather than taking this, these. These items to the full planning commission, the administrative review committee would review them and decide.
Uh, that was, maybe it was dormant, no?
Well, it's dormant until such time that you activate it, but in the code, I have a provision in there that there is. An administrative review committee, if you want to use it, otherwise.
So follow me on page thirty four, if you. If I need, if someone on the water needs to construct a new residence, it's gonna be be approved by the administrative review.
Correct, at that point, it would be, it would go to the administrative.
But I think we, I thought it was dormant.
Dormant until such time that the planning commissioner Jeff needs to send a plan to.
Until it's not dormant, didn't split it up. Well, let's let's back up a stage, I think, um, I think it's dormant in regards to uses. Right, when when we we previously had some on that uh table, we had some uses. That would have gone to the administrative review committee. I think that there are a couple other purposes that the administrative review committee fits that we should still keep in place. One is when we have um some of these aspects regarding our overlays, we have our floodplain overlay. We have our um restricted bluff overlay, and those are areas where. There's a little bit of a higher need for review than just Jeff had reviewed administratively. There's there's more need for technical expertise. Regarding their plan, um, regarding the bluff, there's, you know, the the. Engineering that goes into making sure that the structure that somebody is building.
I'm sure you're right, but the fact is, was represented to us, that it was gonna be dormant, not used at all.
Well, no, the way I interpreted chip was, in the regulated use table, the previous one. We had a small A that would be next to a P or an S that would say that that use. Goes to the administrative review committee. We took all that out, so the uses now are no longer going to be reviewed. By the administrative review committee, they either get reviewed by Jeff or they go to the planning commission.
Right.
But under the overlay, the administrative review committee, like Jeff was saying, would review things like. Projects or structures of the floodplain. Anything that's built in the in the shoreline protection area that requires a more detailed level of review than what zoning administrator.
And if and if I could add, this this portion of the review committee is not something new. We had language in the old existing zoning code that talked about certain situations where. A review of certain people would be um used to determine whether something could be done administratively or brought to the planning commission. Um, examples were some of these situations where more technical expertise was needed, or another example was. Let's say that somebody previously had a site plan that came to the planning commission for review. And at some point in the future, they want to update that site plan, they want to make some changes to it, but they feel that those changes are extremely minor. There is a another instance where the review committee comes into place where that administrative review committee can determine. If the proposed changes are minor enough where it can be reviewed administratively. Or if it needs to be brought to the planning commission for further discussion. So I I do apologize for the confusion earlier, uh, was not my intent to mislead you. That we were completely making it dormant, I thought we were discussing the review committee in regards to. Whether or not we were going to have some of the uses on the use table be brought to the review committee.
I only see two places, Chip, what you see is only in the shoreline.
Hey, I haven't, I need to look through this thing again now, okay, I mean, the fact is, I would say the creative review committee is dormant, period. Until so so such time as we want to.
Here's, here's what I'm thinking, um, to avoid any concerns, why don't we change administrative review committee in this table? Shoreline protection to planning direction.
It's it's all, you know, to be.
Overkill?
Yeah, to be fair to the property owners, it's just overkill. I mean, right now. Right now, the city can decide if the zoning administrator, manager and the attorney. Get together and they make decisions that never come before the planning commission. The administrative review committee has actually broadened that. We've got the zoning administrator, planning commission chair, planning commission member, city attorney, city manager. And planning consultant, so we've actually broadened the number of people that are gonna be looking at these more technical items. So, yeah, why 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 put a property owner through. An owner's review when they're doing something like near the floodplain that we normally would do internally anyway.
Right.
The other thing that I would add is. Bringing that to the planning commission as opposed to some type of administrative review brings forth. A whole nother level of participate, and and not to say that I want to pull anything away and and not that to say that I'm trying to hide things from the public. But when you have the full planning commission and they're and they're just reviewing something to make sure that it can be done safely. And we start getting inundated with um concerns that aren't regarding that safety issue. And they're regarding some other aspect of the plan that we're not there to talk about. I think it can mislead the public what we're really there to discuss and improve. By by having that conversation at this level.
All right, how many decisions is administrative review committee uh due a month? Today?
Real realistically, at this point in time, it's it's maybe three or four per year, yeah, so this isn't something that comes out on owners. It it would be on rest if somebody coming to the land, well, here here's a question, got you, that I. I appreciate.
Well. I mean, if uh if that's our criteria, we can put it on the planning commission and put our residents through a whole lot of stuff. But if it makes everybody feel better, we could.
I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, it's just another.
Well, can I provide you with an example of something that the administrative review committee previously reviewed? And whether you think that that's the type of thing that would need to come to the planning commission? We we've had previous applications where they submit their plan and and the planning commission reviews it and approves it. And then when they get to the point where they're ready to finalize and pull their permits, they determine. We need to move the building six inches in east or west. It it's it's still complies with zoning setbacks, it still complies with everything else, but that is technically a change from the site plan that the planning commission reviewed. And the idea of the review committee is, or one of the aspects that were that we've had and are proposing. Is that the review committee would sit down and determine, is that a significant change enough where it needs to go back to the planning commission? Or it do we feel that this is minor and that no pertinent discussion would need to be had? And then basically they can give the approval to just do it administratively without a meeting. So, I mean, that's the type of things that were that were talking about.
That could also save a little time, like if so, in your example. This person now to come to the clinic, she has to wait another two weeks for that meeting that maybe could happen. So they wouldn't miss some kind of.
Not another two weeks, potentially another two months, also then the add cost.
You're trying to get something going, yeah.
We're we're not applying something that already exists.
Yeah, but also a lot of these things would come to the science mission. It's a company, planning commission, which is referred to, you know, says people who are on this committee anyway, other expert review, whatever. So, yeah.
All right, how do you feel about keeping the administrative review committee? As the uh vehicle for people to bring these two types of. Uh shoreline protection strip projects forward.
Well, the overlays.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, this table is only in shoreline protection strip.
Is it not also there for? Is that there for the restricted plus? And this and this is, this would not create a deviation for the for the proposed approval process for different uses. This would be in addition to. That. So you're only proposing it for the shoreline protection or the bluff and everything else, or like?
Where it's written, it's only in the shoreline protection.
Is that the intent?
Yeah, mine ten.
I, uh, thank you, I have two two que- problems with it, one. Could you read me the administrative review committee people again, or offices?
Zoning administrator, planning commission chair, a planning commission member, city attorney, city manager. And planning consultant.
I I like that, but there's a lot of staff members on that and only what, two people from the public, so that's one problem I have.
How do they do that, Wes Travers? How do you guys do that?
I'm not in Wes Travers.
Okay, I take your point though.
Maybe the administrative review committee doesn't have approval of missions. Maybe they're recommended, maybe they make recommendations back.
I think the idea here is.
Yeah, that is what they can make this. Planning commission makes right now, to be.
No, no, it's ones Jeff makes right now by himself.
Well, I let let's back up, I I think it's, the idea here is this would, this generally, we're only putting this in place. For situations where the planning commission feels public discussion isn't needed or warranted. But not necessarily to the point where Jeff gets gets to be the one vote to decide. Like, right now, essentially, I am an administrative review committee of one person. Anything that's residential that meets all the requirements of the zoning code, Jeff Grim approves on his own. Anything that's commercial comes to the planning commission. But let's say that there's a certain type of a project that the planning commission says, Jeff, we need somebody with more expertise than just you. We want to make sure that there's an engineer or somebody involved in this, which is where the planning consultant would come in within in their staff. To say we want a a higher level of review with more eyes on it. Um, and and the other thing that the planning administrative review committee could do is say, we think this does need public discussion. It's it's not there to pull away from the planning commission, it's there to provide an avenue for, if the planning commission feels appropriate. That there doesn't need to be public discussion on it, that it can be done in a at a quicker pace than like the planning commission, their meetings.
I like that, is there an appeal process, they you approve some, the committee reviews some that. The community doesn't like, where would we go now?
Again, there's there's always an appeal process to everything, but the the question, again. We're talking about issues that are just approving something and with regarding the regulations that are on the books. Right, so an example would be like, who do you want to, who do you want to be the person that decides? Of what, how the approval process is on a fence, let's say. We have a high restriction on fences in the front yards, limited to four feet. Do do you think that I am capable of reviewing a plan on where a fence is going to be placed and what the height limit of that fence is? Having language in the code that says four feet is the appropriate height? Or do you think that that's beyond my technical expertise and that we need more people involved in that discussion? Then on the other end of the of the court, we have larger plans that involve a lot of moving parts, like a restaurant. Within the central business district, that's gonna have a lot more, and there's gonna warrant more discussion, and the planning commission has felt in the past. Let's do that at the planning commission level. But if it's something that's just needing expertise, like, you know, we need to make sure that an engineer has reviewed the plan. To make sure that it's gonna be safe uh to build this house in this proximity to the floodplain. You know, you're you're really just looking at that technical review by what a professional has done that. To know whether or not it should be done. And do you feel that you need to have that discussion at the planning commission level with the public? Or are you comfortable with that being approved administratively based on the review provided? Does that?
Mark Prandell, I'm gonna wrap this up.
I think that this has been very, very adequately explained by Jeff and John and all the discussion. This is fundamentally coming down to exactly the same discussion between. S, uh, uh, special land use approvals and P, uh, permitted by rights. We are looking for a mechanism to allow the public to trample on personal property rights, thank you.
We have a hand up on Zoom, S, B, H.
Uh, th- this is actually in relation to about a half hour ago's discussion. It's all right, this is Scott Heston, six eight four West Bluff Drive, so if you want to wrap up this discussion, my hand was in relation to. Cluster housing and pu- uh planned unit developments and what zones they were supposed to be in, which was quite some time ago, so finish what you're doing.
Yeah, let's finish what we're doing, okay. I take back my suggestion to make it more onerous and costly and difficult on people for a few, very few. Projects that would require this in the shoreline protections. So, are we okay to run as is with the administrative review committee constituted only for these things? Chip, you and I can both scan the whole document for any other.
Right, so we're only gonna, so the administrative review committee is 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 dormant in all cases except for looking at. Issues in the shoreline protection strip.
Let's check that, let's check that.
Agriculture, not the.
Let's check that.
That's what it sounds like.
If in in the bluff overlay, it specifically says that the plan has to come before the plan.
Why you didn't have it?
In that context, I'm confident. Others?
Yes.
Yes, cover it in, keep it away, as in.
Right, Chip and I will both stand the whole document, see if there's any other.
Under page thirty three of the block. Number two, it says the planning commission shall review and decide whether such activity shall be permitted.
Okay, right, so we, it's, there's a lot of things that the that we're talking about here tonight. But it only applies to the to the shoreline protection, it's silly to activate a whole thing for one thing, I.
At this point. And maybe maybe three years down the road, maybe the planning commission would want to use it for something else.
I I I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Isn't there another something in there somewhere that the administrative committee is there to determine if a plan has changed sufficiently enough? That it needs to come back to.
Yeah, it's a minor change, which you.
Yeah, but and that's something that existed in the old code, yeah.
Well, we're all gonna see the draft in the next couple of days. We can reflect on this. All right, Scott Heston, let's go back to you.
Hi, sorry, um, so you guys were discussing what was appropriate. Uh, zones to have planned unit developments and cluster housing in, well, eh, at some time ago. Um, and what I wanted to, to discuss, I heard somebody talk about community assets, I heard somebody talk about, uh. Places where it might not be appropriate. And the reason that I want to argue that it might not be appropriate in the residential agricultural zone. Is because historically, um, farming has been sort of considered a side item. And larger, uh, factory farms, that sort of thing, have worked to increase the price of land. In order to make smaller farmers sell. And so when we talk about a zone that, uh, is designed to be the lower density. Is designed to have larger areas, adding the option of putting in, uh, cluster housing and. Planned unit developments, one of the side effects of those things is to frequently raise property values. And that has the side effect of pricing out anybody who wants to use the land for farming. Um, and so, I wanted to ask if that was something that maybe we could consider protecting. Like you protected the very small amount of land that you have for industry, protecting the very small land that you have for agriculture as well.
I'm looking at the planning commission.
I agree, that meets a valid. I think.
So in the district. Where we have the most opportunity.
And the biggest lots.
We wouldn't want to allow.
I'm just listening to the farmer and what he has to say, and I agree with what he says.
There's no, there's no, there's no farms.
Yeah, there's no farms.
There are no farms.
Um, if, if I may, um, there is land there that's available for farming. Uh, and I have attempted to purchase that land, and it is. Holding out for a, a value that is far beyond my capacity, which is, is exactly to my point.
That's the market.
That's the market, we can't do anything about, I mean, the ship has sailed, right?
I'm so comfortable with our original. Just, you know, just be honest.
Um, okay, sounds like planning commission feels comfortable, including, uh, our A. In the list that could have planned development.
Thank you for your time.
All right, I think we have a deal. Are there any other, are there any other older new justice from the planning commission?
How are we gonna structure these, um, open houses?
Structure of the open houses will be preformed, so there will not be a presentation, I'm thinking. It'll just be visuals on easels and one-on-one conversations.
And just limited number of us there.
Yeah, we can filter in and out.
I mean, is, isn't there a number issue?
There's a number, can't have five.
Okay.
Can't have five. Um, so, you know, somebody did a sign up thing for us last time, so, figure that out. I, really, it's mostly up to Jeff and other media carries, and we can have other people rotate in and out. But it'd be good if you did have conversation. And we'll have binders of the old code or the current code and the new codes, people can compare those.
Would that be here, Bill?
Yeah, right here. Clear the dates and times, we should be good.
I like the idea of easels, rather than a power point up on the wall.
Yeah.
John, do we have a, a sheet of basically changes that we made throughout, like? Between the old code and what we're proposing?
Yes, yeah, I think we do, yeah, between Bill and I, primarily, Bill's been keeping pretty good track.
Yeah, I've been working on that all throughout to, um, so you can, in effect, show a red line of. At a macro level, and not at a single sentence, red line at a macro level about what's, uh, different between. This proposed code and today's code. And then we may have a variation as what's different between this code and the repealed code.
Yeah.
But that's, uh, probably don't want to confuse people too much. And we'll just figure, we're, we're doing high level red lines from the current to the proposed. Okay, all right, thank you, everybody, meeting is adjourned.